Father, we just pray that what we do today, Lord, will be in accordance with your will for the betterment of your people, our people, your county, your nation, and this state. Will we just thank you for your guidance? We thank you for the discernment and wisdom that you impart to us today. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
May I have a pledge of flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've come to the meeting at the border and it's 9:06, and many of our citizens here today, always have you with us. I always argue, I'm always interested, but coming here. But anyway, we have, the first item of business is approval of amendments, I mean, of the minutes. We have minutes for April 1st, 2015, as well as a special joint meeting with Board of Education on April 20th, 2015. Are there any corrections in the minutes?
Chairman, I have one.
Do I have a motion to approve amendments as written?
Salute.
Motion has been made in segment, although it's a favor, say aye, although opposed. Okay, thank you. Agenda adjustments, there is one for under new business, item nine, we have budget amendments 16 and 17, we need to add 18. Under new business, item nine, annul, just annul. Okay, did I hear a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made in second, although it's a favor, say aye, although opposed. Okay, for the neighborhood, item number four, delegations, our first is unannounced delegations, if we have one of them signed. Okay, the first one is Elmer Hoggard.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Elmer Hoggard, and I live in Port Peach. And I've been having a problem with my neighbors playing loud music that disturbing me inside my home. Sometimes they play from their car, sometimes they play from within their home. And I've taken one of them to court and been a little bit successful in stopping them from playing it loud. And now I have another neighbor that's probably up there doing the same thing. Most of them are weekends, they have three young guys over and they get cars and playing music and stuff. I have asked them to turn it down and stuff. Sometimes they curse me out and stuff like that. But it's not only a nuisance, it's devaluing my enjoyment of my home, and I think it decreases the property value of my home. And in the case that I should put my home on the market and want it to sell, they might come on Sunday, and at that time, my neighbor might be playing music. And if on me, I would not have bought my property if I had came and come out of playing music out, I wouldn't have bought my property. I think it's devaluing not only my property, but the property of the neighborhood and the enjoyment of the people within the neighborhood.
Mr. Hoggard, you said you were in Port Peach, what, where exactly?
695, it's the second house on the right going toward the liquor store, just before you hit the door.
But you're on Highway 32?
Yes, sir. I don't have any neighbors close, I think, no closer than 75. And that's a little bit of distance, you know, for me to be hearing music and stuff. But as I was saying, that the value of the property value and the enjoyment of the people within the neighborhood. Now, I have a proposal that the county create with a quiet zone, that I can have my property declared a quiet zone, put up a sign, and send it out to my neighbors and stuff, and let them know that zoning change and stuff for my property and stuff. And give it a little bit extra enforcement. But it's kind of hard now, I had to, I went to court three Fridays on the road just to get one person, you know, violated. So if I had a quiet zone and put up a sign and send it out to my neighbors, let them know that my property has been declared a quiet zone, and if they violate it, that, you know, they get a fine or something like that. But I also want to change, to fill out a form, do like a ticket. If you get a ticket from the cop, you know, you sign it, and please, please get it, and maybe pay a fine, or if you don't, you go to court and challenge it in court. And I do, I volunteer to time to come back later, and if I can't talk to you individually, and if anything you disagree on or whatever, to try to iron out the thing, I would like to have a creation of a quiet zone.
We do have an ordinance in the county.
Yes.
And apparently you're going through the Sheriff's Department, and they've taken that route. But that's, that's not sufficient, is what we're...
Yes, I had, I had one neighbor, I took him to court several times, he paid his fine, even went to jail, so I went to court, gone, and I had to continue it, and Smith three days in there, but it don't seem to fail me.
Sir, there is, to add to the comment that Commissioner Jordan made, there is an ordinance on the books, which is the reason you were able to bring it to the court system. And you're going about it properly by including the Sheriff's Department and the court system in it. I would encourage you to continue that process, because as, and I know it's difficult sometimes when you have to take those days off of work or whatever to be here. But the penalties for something like that get a little more severe as you keep making complaints. We don't, you deserve to be able to rest in your own home. He deserves to be able to play his music, but there is an ordinance that he's not supposed to exceed.
I had, had to, I called the Sheriff's Department, somebody comes out, and sometimes they don't, I mean, I understand the gap, sometimes something else is going on. So, and I still, even though I'm sure I still can go and fill out paperwork, sometimes you don't know the person's name and stuff, it gets a little bit, it's real difficult to deal with sometimes. But so I really like a quiet zone, and I like a little bit extra help on the problem. Like I said, it devalues your property value as well as your enjoyment of your home.
I do think, I know I sort of, I'm not, hadn't read it recently, but I think there is some timeframe on it, about, I don't know, it's...
Time of night.
At time of night. Is it mostly at night that it's upheld?
No, it's during the day. Now, I read the ordinance, and the ordinance says especially after 10 o'clock, but some people seem to have to understand that it can only be enforced after 10 o'clock. But that's not the way I read it, it says especially at 10 o'clock. Now, I had one neighbor, he played, as soon as his girlfriend leave, he was playing that music for hours during the day. I mean, and I recall in the deputy, the deputy came, he said the music was so loud that his stomach was vibrating.
I believe Sheriff Way up is here, and he's indicating you'd like to speak.
I was gonna say, Father, if you all, well, you all put the weight of time limit on it, and actually it's very a nuisance, we can issue a citation any time. It's been asked to be a quiet time from 10 to 6 a.m. In case of Mr. Hoggard, we've issued citations, Mr. Chairman, numerous times, as he said, it's been in court numerous times. And we've, you know, y'all put the weight that's supposed to be timed, which has been good for us, because if it's a nuisance to the citizen, then we're issuing citations for it. And if he doesn't show up on the citation, doesn't file for it, we just do the same steps we do with the other county citations, county citation, the state citation, if he doesn't honor that, next time we're gonna arrest him, he has post bond and so forth. In this case right there, we've been that far in this case.
Sheriff, would you say that this particular incident with this particular individual, would you say it's reached the point where the next step would be arrest, does that...
Oh, we already arrested him. We already arrested him, yes, sir. He's been, the only way you're gonna get through is unfortunately, probably through the public book. And this case right here, he's already been to court numerous times. We've had Mr. Hoggard, I think, we've had at least eight, 10, 12 calls that we've gone over the last few years, we've seen what he's been doing.
So if you receive a call tomorrow, I'm just asking if you would...
We respond to it.
Would you arrest him?
If the music's there, we hear it, we can issue a citation upon that request, but you have to suspend on Mr. Hoggard coming over to testify. If we get there and music's cut down, we don't hear anything, he still has the right to come in and talk to the national official, our county ordinance itself. And we normally either get a criminal summons or warrant, we go out and arrest, the service processed, and it goes forth to the mayor.
I think we need to look at the specific language and see if we can maybe tweak it or just what we can do. You talked about the quiet zone, if it's feasible to enforce it fairly across the county, I think, you know, we can take a look at that. And that's about what we can do right now, is we can take a look at it and see what we might can change if it needs to be.
I think it probably need is talk to Sheriff Way up, and we have for adjustment concerns, and look over and see if we can make it stronger or better, and we'll be back with it. But you are doing the right thing about repiling and recording it so that this week can come out.
Just real quick, y'all might consider me a little sophisticated, maybe in a way, get your attention.
Yes, sir. Larry Crosswell, I live in Lawrence, Missouri. I have a similar problem with a neighbor that's rental, and I've been patient up to this point, and they're fairly new rental. And I agree with him as far as even the sign that states the code. And I know that doesn't stop a lot of people, but at least it's stated before you remit it. And I've seen a lot of towns that have that, and I know it costs money to put a sign up, but, I mean, he's done everything else.
I would want to pay, pay them outside.
Well, that's truly evening. We appreciate your concern, and we will look into it and see what we can do, and we need to make adjustments. But we can't get along doing what you're doing, and we appreciate you coming forward.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next, Daniel Basemore.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dan Basemore, and I am from the great city of Yule, located in the Alltineship. And so, first of all, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and make this small presentation, and I'm hoping this can take me less than five minutes, and I'm allowed it. If I make any statements during these comments that I'm gonna make, I would appreciate any of you to correct me. And because I'm gonna make some statements in accordance with some legwork that I have done on this issue. The issue is the billing for the water department. Now, I'm not standing here before you and talking about any individual that is employed with the county. I want to make that clear so there be no harm feelings of people thinking that I'm trying to downgrade people in the water department, which I am not. So now that I have got that clear, Father, I'll talk about the main issue. I have had a number of people, some that I have a biscuit with or breakfast with, some that I may even have lunch with, others I even associate with in the church that I go to. And since this billing that has been taking place, to where we have to sin, or supposed to sin, our payment for our waters, I have stated. A number of issues have been brought up by these individuals. And as you know, many people that have ideas and comments will not come and speak before you in the public. They will speak to you in private and try to get you to come and talk for themselves and express their views as well. So with that in mind, I want to point some issues of some of the homework that I have done. Correct me again, I say, if I am wrong. The way we have a current billing at this time is we have a drop box that we can put our money in here, 20 courthouse, and the places to pay it, or whatever next door. And we have it to where I have the duty mailing out of state, and then you can bring it here next door and pay it in person. Now, for a person from Yule to drive from there to here to pay their water bill, it would cost them $6 or more to come from Yule to here, plus their time, at the rate of 50 cents a mile. Now, 50 cents a mile is the expense of the automobile, the fuel, the insurances, the taxes they pay on the vehicle, and so on and so forth, like you get reimbursed for when you go on a trip and use your P O B. That's where the 50 cents a mile come in. So it's a minimum of $6 spent, not cash and cash, that cost them to drive here, to use the drop box, or the services next door. So the only other option I am told is to send it out of state. A number of those people have had problems on sending it out of state. To give you a correction, one of my neighbors told me that they had wrote a check, sent it out of state, for it to be there in plenty of time for the cutoff. But yet, they're told it will be charged with late fee. Well, then, when they do some research, all of a sudden, the check shows up. But then they're told that they can't make no adjustments on the late fee. Now, most of us are savvy enough with computers to know that if you make an entry on a computer, you have a way to change that entry, to take it out completely, or modify, and give due credit. If the late penalty is not justified, then why say we can't take it off? You can take it off. It's nothing more than a keyboard error. And any of you that know how to use a computer at all, know how to do it. All right? And that thing is, is that I personally received a phone call telling me I had paid my water bill. Well, I was hitting home. So then, Maury gets an act, she says, Dan, let me handle this, because she knows that when I get involved, I'm gonna change not one line, but two lines, three lines, I'm gonna come get you bottom line, find what problem, start it from. All right, so it looked as though, "Stop for my egg. If you don't pay your bill, your work will be cut off," or something, something like that. Well, I know that we pay our bills, we get them today, and if it's on Friday, they pay them on Monday, no later, Tuesday. And my bank statement will say so. It will show the check that had been wrote, received, processed. But yet, they're gonna give me a call and tell me, "Hey, you didn't pay your bill." Is that justified? Or is someone not doing their job? I don't know. But it's not from these people here in the county. Because I understand it takes place out of the county. Now, the next question comes up. If we power and outsource to do things for us, I used to call it outsourcing, when I was a manager. The only time that I was allowed to use outsourcing was that I didn't have people that were capable to do the job. And if I didn't have people that were capable to doing the job, and I had to outsource it, but these people were supposed to be doing the job, then I got rid of these people and used the outsourced. I didn't keep these people, and then additionally, I added outsourced. You're paying twice for the same service. That's not good business for me. You can take that yourself, some of you sitting here engineers, some of you sitting here with doctor's degrees, and you know that common sense tells you that that is not a good practice. Now, if you're gonna get rid of something, and outsource it, then those bodies that was on there, could they be in the yard, or you're gonna take another job for them? Now, if you make another job for them, that's a different story, and you're giving a different service, that's a different story. So people ask me, "Why I'm paying twice?" I say, "I can answer that, you can quit and ask them." The end, they had to fight them, come through. So the bottom line is for this, I was told at one time that we do want to have an address to mail the water bill, the date. But in this research that I've done, I found out we just have it, but with a current confusion. Now, we got a total of four sources, a way of paying, now that we find out we have that address. Even though with a current confusion, that it can be used on total. So for those people that are satisfied with the other ways of paying, and you have the fourth one available, my request to you is, is to put a flyer inside of the water bill listing all four. And if that one, bottom one, is the address of 105 Water Department of Gate, 105 Engage. And if we put it in the newspaper also, the way they can read it in the newspaper, of the four ways that you can pay that bill. And then let the citizens make up their mind, which choice they want to use. It'll cost them 44 cents plus on the envelope to have it here, and feel comfortable with it getting here, because then you're only dealing with here, and here don't have to deal with out of state. And that's the concept that we have. And so, we're active for your support in that. Not to shutter this 105 bottom all through the side and deter people from using, but encourage people to use what's available. I thank you. Where are you, Chairman? And I'd like to see some action on this plate.
Well, thank you for coming forward, Mr. Basemore, but I think we need to, there are some slight misconceptions to some of the things, statements that you made.
Okay.
And I see Mrs. Henderson is here, if she would come forward, or...
Number one, excuse my self-awareness.
All right, okay. Thank you for the opportunity. Number one, I was jotting down things as Mr. Basemore had stated. We actually have, we actually have six ways now for you to pay your utility bill. You can come to drop boxes outside, you can mail it in, you can come to the window and pay the person. And on the back of your bill, you can pay by official payments, which is by phone or either by the computer. And with bill paid with your bank, we have an accounts receivable box. So there are six ways you can pay your bill. And I'm personally working on bank drafts and debit or credit cards, we're hoping to instigate this at the need for this for the year. So we are working on this. Mr. Basemore did come into the office yesterday and ask if that was a non-mailing address, and I did give him post office box 105. I was questioned in February when we went to our lot box and our A R box to shut down here box 105. I said, "Give us a few months to get everything worked out." We still have some customers that are sending in with the remitted stuff from older bills that has here box 105. So a few of those are still coming in, and some customers have not corrected the address with their electronic bill pay service. And they have been contacted on an individual basis with letters to please correct this. So here box 105 is gonna be phased out. We've only been in this four months, we get maybe 30 checks through this, which is not bad out of our 4,400, 4,500 customers. So that's what I told him yesterday, I was discouraging him from spreading here box 105. But if a check shows up, as he was saying, with, it has cleared their bank, but they're still being charged a late fee or service fee, we get notification the same day that our lot box opened that envelope. The same day someone used that check, scanned it, we get notification the same day. That should be the day before your check is cleared back. If there's proof of that, and there has been miscommunication, please bring the proof, we'll be happy to make adjustments. The one he was talking about, he received a robocall, I'll be happy to discuss that with him out of the office, because it was a personal nature with his family. And we've had a lot of success with those robocalls going out. But again, I'm encouraging all citizens, to, all of our customers, to give us a good phone number. We hope people coming in the next day after robocalls appreciate it, because it has just slipped by that we have a receipt of payment. And they'll be glad to pay a 10% late fee versus having a $25 service fee, because their water's gonna be disconnected. That's all I have to come up with at this current time, but we can say A R box is and our lot box going very successfully now. We got the Bud's work tag, and we appreciate the board okay for the customer service department to be able to utilize the service.
And why it's going out of state, that's where Southern Bank...
That's their lot box.
That's their lot box. It's Southern Bank, which was where they have the check processing.
Yeah.
And so that is a bank decision.
Because the board questioned it very early on, they would love to have a service local in the state if nothing else, but that was not an option with Southern Bank.
And the only other thing, I believe you were talking about paying, if, because of the regulations by the local government authorities, the person who goes to the post office collects the checks cannot open the check, someone else has opened the checks, then someone else has to...
Enter the check in.
Enter the check in. So it has to go through three different individuals, but for security. And I said, that is a lot of man hours.
I relate to that.
To process checks, if you had 4,400 checks, you just think, I might, I mean, I was upset.
But my question is, aren't we paying that man hours plus the man hours that I was paying? We're paying for these people, right?
Yeah. Stay fit, collecting taxes and water and all those things.
Every dollar that comes into the county, whether it be a check from the state, planning inspections from the sheriff's office, social services, the transportation department, extension office, that all comes through that collection system.
When people perceive them to be just water bill clerks, they're clerks for all those departments and agencies.
I have no problem with that, and like I say, I'm not talking about the work that they do, sure, I made that clear from when we got there. I am just saying, the sources that we have available, make sure that people are aware of the sources. We elect you to represent us, to keep us informed. We want to be informed. We don't want to think head under the table, and we don't think that you would pay to do that, that we wouldn't vote for you. And we don't think that you would pay to do that, then we wouldn't vote for you. And I, 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 I think you appreciate me saying it. And so, keep us informed with what is available. And I think that if you put this flyer in there, and I could be wrong, and I'm not a better man, but I'd be willing to pick up a decent couple of two cents worth anyhow, uh, to get it across even through the newspaper, that you see the mail in here to this address increase. Now, we're talking about how low number that is, but I think you see that increase because some of the same people who come here and pay here at this office say the reason that they come here is because of that stuff out of state.
Well, I know sometimes I can mail some things from high school to get to eighth school and it's taking over a week. Uh, it's just because as I have stayed, doesn't mean it's going to take long.
Well, that's true too, but the thing of it is, they're using that for their reason. That would be a reason that would no longer exist if they did exist. And I would worry that if you got nine about six, if you cut it down to one, then you're doing something. Or if you cut it down to two, you're doing something. But if you go up from six to eight, they were conscious what two would do, then something is wrong there. You're thinking about it.
I think it's a good idea that we do have the water department, uh, informing the citizens of all the available options.
We're happy to do that.
And also put it on website of the number of options that we have. And maybe take a look, another look county manager, uh, finance director, all of Diane, take another look at, uh, feasibility of keeping the local address usable. And, you know, if, if it's not going to be a problem, then maybe we should do that. I would say drop down another process for what we have.
I thank you for your time.
We will take a look at it, um, often. One thing I would say, when we looked at it at the very beginning, it was more cost effective and we all like bottom line. It's more cost effective to do three check clearing system than a high manpower here. Because of benefits, uh, you know, it's a flat rate and they do it on a large scale.
Well, and that, we, we could go on and on and on and on because of my business right now. But does anyone, uh, make a, uh, survey and a job study of each job position before we went to these outsourcer people? That had the knowledge to know what is supposed to be done in a time of mine? Because I, I implemented a program called Math 3, which is an activity. And what they did in their office, well, you're sitting right there. You didn't have to walk to the back of the room to get to a filing cabinet. You were timed how long you turned around and they had the filing cabinet set there. You pulled the cabinet, go out, pull paper out. Now, those of you that work with the government, military, proper for me with that term, because they use it. And in many cases, you can go into a place where there's five people that employed one of those. And I'm not saying touch workforce out. I'm saying, you're saying you want to get the most for your money? That's a thing to look into also. So, I, I'm not gonna get all, and, and allow men all over the subject out of there and, and, uh, I, I run plates because, uh, I've been there, done that, and been in the discussion, so I'm not gonna do it. I want him run the public office because I hate the word W O R K. And so, I, I do thank you for your time and I appreciate you. And, uh, Mr. Jordan, I, I appreciate you coming in about the possibility of continuing to keep the options that you have on a 105 box number or even a box number for where it is.
Well, we will look at it, but we have looked at it very in much detail, but we will look at it again.
Okay. Now, do I come back to you to get answers or do you get back to me or what?
Maybe county manager will, uh, get back to us and let us know what the guilty evidence that they say, alright.
And I, I'm not sure that we did the study like you said, but we did study the situation and considered the cost factors.
Okay. And, and so, by paying more people, it saves you more money. That's what you're saying?
Well, we have, we're paying them more service. Well, I don't have any idea how many people they hire. And we have consolidated our collection because of state regulations of like the way you give, I mean, money was handled. Um, and that was part of the equation as well. Because there are state regulations. Just didn't intend to say something about that.
I mean, we did a major reorganization, as everybody's aware, last year or year before. Sorry, I don't have a loud enough. I just wanted to let everybody that we did do a major reorganization of this department and these divisions a couple of years ago. And these are things that were looked at. Ladies and the customer service department have taken on numerous more duties. And while they have recognized, and one of the things that we recognized was that outsourcingness for the fees that we pay was less expensive than bringing another person in. And in order to accomplish everything and all the duties they've been given, one of the ways that we accomplished this was to outsource this and also to make it more efficient. The money gets to the bank, it's deposited that day, it's in our accounts that day, and the accounts are credited. Where with us, it takes us an extra day to get everything run to everybody it needs to go to and then get it to the bank. So, all of that was studied. It's not that we did this because anybody was not capable of doing these duties. It was because we didn't have the manpower and rather than expanding further, we opted to outsource this to save the county some money. And also process these payments more efficiently and give them our bank accounts quicker.
May I ask what the opinion of outsourcer is a percentage of the flat fee?
It is a flat fee and I believe it is maybe ten cents per item.
I'm wondering.
I believe it may be ten cents per item, but I have to go back and double check.
But worse, that would be twenty-four hundred, that'd be four hundred and forty dollars.
But they don't, oh, yes, but they don't all go through there. And, and I'd have to go look at some bills. The projections we have of less than ten thousand dollars per year to handle this. And I believe that included A.R. box as well with the electronic payments because we also initiated that at the same time as the free service.
So, what can we do with the person that was doing the billing before?
They're still there, but they have been assigned numerous duties. So, when we consolidated and created customer service, our utility billing clerk is no longer a billing clerk. She's been assigned numerous other duties in customer service. Instead of just doing utility billing, now they have to list this law. So, rather than bring another body into customer service to simulate these payments. Right.
The only thing I'd like to do is to keep the people informed of what we got available. And request to try to keep either that number, 105. You said, didn't somebody make a comment, something like that? There was a point in time that it ever stopped?
Yes, the intent was for that post office box to go away because we're paying for the post office box in Pennsylvania and we're trying to lessen the checks that run through our office because they're handled more efficiently in Pennsylvania. And honestly, we've done the research and to mail to Pennsylvania or to mail it to Gatesville, there was very little difference. Usually two to three days.
Did, did it go into the lock box or what?
Yes, it's a P.O. box where the bank has, has a contractor or the bank employees. They get it from the bank, from the post office box. And they process the payments and deposit them that day.
Okay.
So, it is a post office box.
Okay.
It's free comment.
I, I, I'm sure. I'm sure the county already looked at all this stuff and did the, um, to save the citizens, uh, money. And I think we spent enough time on this issue with that. I don't hear other people's issues like that. That's all I want to say.
And Mr. Batesmore, we will take a look at it one more time.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
For the third or fourth time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next gentleman is Sherwood.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I have an issue. I want to talk about this. We, uh, myself and Chief Hattie Hathaway had the unfortunate, um, instance to attend a funeral on Monday for a young man that grew up here in Gates County by the name of Jerry Brown, who was an FBI agent that was killed in the line of duty, killed in, in Washington, D.C. Some of you may have known him, some of you may have not. But, um, in the process of dealing with that this past week and everything, it brought my attention about something that I've been working on since I was sheriff. And, uh, we had something that we wanted to bring to your attention. Next week is National Law Enforcement Week. Next Friday, May fifteenth, this actually was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Um, yesterday was May fifth, two thousand and fifteen. On May fifth, two thousand and nineteen twenty-five, there was a young man by the name of Vernon Easton that was killed here in Gates County in the line of duty. That was ninety years ago today. Yesterday, excuse me. When I took office as sheriff, each sheriff is passed down in a pamphlet and a booklet that each year comes down and is passed on through to the respective sheriffs. There's an article that is so old, it's falling apart. There's the story behind Mr. Vernon Easton. Mr. Vernon Easton was twenty-three years old and on May fifth, nineteen twenty-five, went to serve a warrant for illegal alcohol. He was shot and killed here in the county with a load of buckshot to the chest. Um, from everything, and the people that I've heard talking with some of our older senior citizens, who some of them have passed on now, previous sheriffs and so forth, he was killed instantly. I just wanted to bring to you the fact that back in two thousand and ten, we were finally able to get Mr. Easton recognized in North Carolina as a fallen officer for the county of Gates. What you have in front of you that you were just handing is now from the national memorial. And as of this week, next week, he will be recognized nationally as an officer that failed in the line of duty of citizens of Gates County. And I just wanted to, uh, bring it to y'all's attention. I just ask the citizens, uh, next week, May fifteenth, all during the week, if you see a fellow officer, not just necessarily Gates County, but all across the country, if you see one of them in Tidewater area, Ahoski, Luton City, whatever, just thankful for what they do. Jeremy Brown died in the line of duty. He was twenty-nine years old. He was doing something he didn't love. We're not, we're not in this for money. We're not in for, we're here for people, serve people in the community. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that we finally got him recognized nationally. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service and we know that every, every time we go on the call, you don't know what will happen.
Like I said, this is actual picture. Everybody saw this is actual picture of Mr. Easton. It's the only one that we have on record. And it's posted up in our sheriff's office, of this Mr. Vernon Easton. And in front of this promo card, that particular day, this is taking two or three days before he was killed.
Sheriff, what is it? May fifteenth, what is that date? What is it actually called?
May fifteenth is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Next week, starting on Sunday through the following Sunday, will be National Law Enforcement Week, where there'll be benefits and so forth. There'll be, uh, there's a rise. We have a rolling thunder here in North Carolina where law enforcement officers from all across the state can ride motorcycles. I'm not one of them. But they will ride across the state of North Carolina recognizing all the fallen officers that died in line of duty in North Carolina. And like I said, this is the actual picture. If anybody walks by, it's in the sheriff's office. It's up there on the wall. And we just want to recognize and we finally got him recognized nationally after nine years.
We thank you for your efforts and we do appreciate our heralds. You do all your awesome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, um, I think that's the end of the under-nights delegation. Now, we'll go to a nights delegation. The Reverend Lucas Harold. Representing the Gates Emergency Ministries.
This is county in the Gates County. Somehow that county had just started.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am like Lucas Harold, the president of GM's acronym, Gates County Emergency Ministries. President of the Board of Directors. We are personally housed at the old doctor's office. But we're not sure if it's permanency. We want to let us from the county to let us know that we are there. We may remain there. Or we wouldn't, we are all working on an uncertainty now. We don't know whether we move out anytime soon or not. We like it. It gives us more peaceability than the old Regis Go School building did. We have it now that the clients can sit out while one is being interviewed and they know everyone doesn't hear one's business. And we have a lovely staff room. And your county emergency, have you been there to look at it? Okay. And I think it's very efficient. And all I've come out, they sent me, they sent me to you to see if we can get something from you to give us permanency back. Now, I know maybe we've asked, or we not asked for never be moved up for a hundred years from now, still be there. But in my daytime, uh, could you say there's something that would get me, that I would be guaranteed that the group can stay there?
And you're pleased with the, um?
Facilities and everything.
I think we probably give you something on one of those ones, uh.
There is a statement in your packet. The original intent was once the EIC building was complete, for them to move back in.
We don't, we don't know, don't move back in.
But since they are pleased with the facilities on Medical Center Road, I do not see any reason for them to move back to the EIC building. I do have some other ideas for that building.
Uh, for the EIC building.
For the EIC building, correct.
Uh, also it's more centrally located for your clients, um, than to being in Gatesville.
Right.
And also the parking is easier. You can drive up to it on its level.
Accessibility is better. We don't need a ramp. See there, EIC building, there were steps. We could never get a ramp. Please there. Here is ground level. If people come up there.
And people with walkers or, or who are, have trouble walking, it's much easier. And for us bringing in things, it was much easier carrying those packages of food in.
At all times, it's all loaded, but have to receive the materials and to put them away. And before they had a cargo box just for those boxes and now they can just roll around, you know, a flatbed or something.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm in motion that, uh, we allow GM's maintenance location there in at the, uh, Medical Center and that county manager would send, uh, come in writing to confirm, uh, the results of this book.
Okay, uh, you, our motion's been, uh, manager, I hear a second.
Second.
Motion's been made second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. And that'll be two, three minutes.
I can do that, alright.
Okay, the next one, uh, on our agenda is, um, Sterling Baker, North Carolina Department of Transportation.
Oh, thanks for having us here today. Um, my name is Sterling Baker. I'm the division maintenance engineer, um, for DOT for this region. Um, we wanted to kind of knock out several things on this visit. Um, used to we were required to visit, um, commissioners yearly on the secondary road construction program, um, by law. That, um, program went away in twenty-ten, so it's been, uh, our business to y'all has been more sporadic. So, what we're going to do is do a concentrated effort to get out to each county in the division at least yearly. Um, so we can be seen and talk if y'all have any concerns that y'all may have or whatever. Um, with me today is, um, Lynn Richards. He's the assistant division maintenance engineer, um, my assistant. And Andy Mulder is the new county maintenance engineer for Gates County. He has Gates, Chawan, and Queens. We've done a bunch of internal rearranging. Um, Gates was formerly paired with Camden, past. past the time it's Quinones, so we rearranged it at his office, the new office we set up is at the prison, at the old uh, warden's office, we converted to his office there. So he's located in the county, if y'all need him, just uh, give him a call and he can uh, address any needs y'all have, he had from a maintenance standpoint. Um, we really wanted to come talk about the secondary, I mean the uh, resurfacing and re-treatment plan. Before, before I get to that, give you a little history, um, while I prepare for each county, we're going to all fourteen counties in the division in the next couple of months. Um, and I wanted to just give y'all a synopsis of our budgets, which uh, budget snapshot of what it's looked like over the last five years. Um, as you can see, y'all have in your packet on the screen here, um, this is the division budget as a whole for maintenance, this is all fourteen counties combined. Um, as you can see, we have had a uh, continuing decrease, usually our primary maintenance, five years ago, we received eleven point seven million, uh, this past fiscal year we were down to eight point nine million. Uh, secondary maintenance, we used to be at thirteen point two million five years ago, this past year we were at ten point two. Secondary road construction, this is the program that I referenced that we used to come to y'all yearly on, this is the paving the dirt roads program. Uh, by law that went away in twenty-ten, the available funds, you wind them down over several year process. Um, used to, for the division, we would receive roughly eight point five million dollars per year, uh, this past year our budget was zero for that, as I said, it's gone away. Primary bridge maintenance, that stayed pretty static around two million dollars this past year, it dipped down to one point nine, but that's pretty static. Secondary bridge maintenance, um, one point nine million, uh, it dipped down a little bit to one point four million this past fiscal year. Primary resurfacing, um, for the division, now these, these are the two plots, you see they have increased, the legislators have made a concentrated effort in shifting our funds into resurfacing. Um, we were getting eleven point four million per year, then we went up to fourteen, and we've been averaging about fourteen since then, this past year we got fourteen point nine million. And secondary, um, seven point eight five years ago, and that's increased to twelve point nine million. The next page is probably what you're a little more interested in, this is Gates County Um, here you can see our maintenance says, um, five years ago we were at five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for Gates County primary, uh, this past year we were at three hundred and sixty thousand. Secondary, we were at nine hundred and fifty thousand, this past year we were at six hundred and forty-nine thousand. Secondary road construction was at six hundred and twenty-six thousand, now that's a zero. Bridge maintenance, both primary and secondary, the reason you see such a big fluctuation there is we're required to inspect every bridge, um, by federal standards, every two years, so there's a cyclic pattern to that, when inspectors come to that area, we therefore have issues according to those inspections that we have to address, so you see a cyclic pattern in that, one year it may be really high, one day it may go down from a zero. It's pretty much us addressing those cyclic needs, uh, as dictated by the bridge inspections. Um, primary resurfacing, five years ago we were six hundred and ten thousand, this past year we're at one point one million. And secondary resurfacing, that's um, stayed pretty static, six hundred and sixteen thousand to six hundred thousand. Um, that's Gates County specific, and one thing I wanted to point out, um, for your next sheet, that quick, just one second, some costs, um, we have to incur no matter what we do, one is mowing. On primary, we, last year we spent four hundred, uh, forty-five thousand dollars mowing primary, um, six thousand on lights and signals and electricity for those, and ninety-one thousand mowing secondaries. Um, now this is the contract moment, that does not include the side distance mowing that we knew, the lawnmower movers, and the uh, governments, we handle that ourselves also. For those tops that, you know, we had three hundred and sixty thousand, so out of that forty-five thousand, we go straight to mowing for that. Um, the real thing that we came to talk to you about is on the, this next page. Here, um, this is our contract resurfacing and preservation program for the next three years. Um, this program, condition that we set it up and resurfaced, um, as we deemed it based on our condition, payment condition survey, this past year the legislature's passed a law, we have to present this program as a three-year program to the Board of Transportation every year, and they approve that, so it locks these roads in place. In essence, and also Board's way to delivery standpoint that they set, it required us to cash flow our entire resurfacing fund a year in advance. So we got out the past fiscal years resurfacing last November and December, and we're in the process right now for the last month and next month, we are contracting and cash flowing everything for fifteen, sixteen. And though we won't really get those funds until probably September of this year, depending on the legislature's rhythm, but um, we're going ahead and cash flowing all that uh, roughly thirty million dollars of the resurfacing beforehand in order to meet the deadlines that they set. Um, this here lists the roads in the county, primary and secondary that we will uh, that we're locked into right now for, so if these roads unless a budget shortfall or something comes up and we can't fund the cash flow program, these are the roads in the next three years that we're going to get resurfaced or we're going to get re-treated.
What, what happens if uh, some of these roads that are designated to be resurfaced and budgeted for, and we don't get to, is that money going to be just turned back in or we have to use it for something else?
They have, and, and uh, as somebody said earlier, there's a no pay option, we will get to them. Um, the other thing that would hurt it is, you know, since we're cash flowing, we're spending money that we haven't got yet as far as allocation. So if we, if we contract thirty million, and next year our allocation is twenty-five million, then the year after that, some of those will be, will be cut off.
I, I noticed that uh, secondary road construction, we got zero...
Yes, sir.
...dollars. And uh, as a matter of fact, we just had some citizens that were, a citizen, uh, that was concerned about uh, having a private road turn into a state maintained road. So that, does that mean that there's no funds for that this year?
Um, used to we did, you're right, we did use secondary road funds to cover road additions and things like that. Um, I'm not gonna lie, we have treated each one of those as a special case. If it did not require a lot of additional money, our board member has been very generous and has been funding several of them across the whole bridge. He has discretionary pot of four hundred to five hundred thousand each year, depending on what legislator signs. Um, so he's been very generous in funding a lot of the road additions. Um, now I will say, if it is an unpaid road, and we get to add, there is no designated stream of funding to get it ever paid. What it would have now is the secondary road program is still being county specific, it's funded ten million dollars a year off the top statewide, and then how that road ranks in a statewide pot is how it gets, how it will be paid.
Okay, uh, under comments section, VST?
Yes, sir. That's actually the tune on Circus Street, but that's the Rockin' Tar Street.
Observation.
Mm-hmm.
A little road off of uh, Millfarn Road, I, I just have them riding down there one of them, just to, just to ride through there, and uh, it's paved from uh, I believe it's Millfarn...
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, to Millfarn... To Blackbank, is it Blackbank or... But uh, after you get in there, maybe about a thousand feet, it all turns back to dirt roads, you gotta pave it on both sides, uh, what, I mean...
The history of that is, the, the dirt road sections were right away unavailable, the people were, would not sign the right of way, the right of way has to be given to pave dirt roads. Um, and at that time, when they were, I think they've just been tried several times actually, but when we tried to get the right of way for that, the landowners weren't willing to sign the right of way to make it a complete paved road, so at the time it was deemed that we would pay what, pay what benefited the people that would have signed.
I uh, recently attended a DOT meeting uh, as part of that board, and I understand Solly Road is also on that list, and that uh, includes that same problem?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
For right of way issues. Uh, also, during that meeting, there were some proposals up to the year twenty uh, twenty-one. Are you, for me, would that replace the bridge in Gates County?
Yeah, I'll bridge the place, yes, sir. We, we did include that because that is more of our construction funds, and this was just making us money, I mean, I know the construction funds are valuable, but this is what impacts y'all probably more day-to-day than the, the construction funds. And this has a lot more volatility. The construction funds are set by formula, by law, and by story rank, while these, um, these pots, like I said, when the legislature focused more funds on resurfacing, they didn't give us more money, they took it from maintenance. So it shifted from the first two pots to the last two pots, there was no overall influx of vision cash.
Does that pot still include thirteen all the way down to Virginia Line, or is that still in...
Coming out of the construction in four lane, um, that is in the TIP, but it was not a funded program in this last year. That, this uh, the way, I'm not sure if I'm familiar with it, but last year everything changed, actually the year before they had the law replaced, but last year it's been in effect. Um, the whole funding scenario for road construction, um, went from a regional based thing to a statewide prioritization program, assigning funds and all that, and uh, those sections that were uh, affecting this in the process.
I see, um, I had citizens ask me to look into a road, and, and I've done so, I see that it's Langston Road has made the list. And so, it says here, um, looks like you just got quotation marks underneath there, so the timeframe for that date of availability is like June fifteenth?
Yes, sir. So it's safe to all of them.
Okay, so everything under there, so it's like, good news for me, okay?
Get time to comment?
Oh, that's a good one.
Okay, um, next up is Angela Welch, RPO for presentation of Gates County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. I see your...
Good morning, thank you for having me here. Up in January of twenty-fourteen, can you hear me? Um, the MRPO, Transportation Plan Branch, which is the Division of the NCDOT, being a, um, the Gates County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We formed a steering committee of, um, there are several board members, and there were citizens, uh, citizens of Gates County on this, um, county as well. What we're here today to do is to actually have the board adopt the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. What, um, and if you, I'm sure you've noticed, the plan actually isn't complete, the way the DOT, um, has, has us do it is you actually adopt the maps. Um, you won't get the complete plan until after it goes through the board pool, MRPO endorsement, and then the Board of Transportation approval as well, but you do get another opportunity to review it. Um, so today you're actually adopting the maps that we, we have approved. Um, CTP is a long-range transportation plan, it's multi-modal, includes highways, rail transit, and bike investment. Um, there's no money tied to it, and as Sterling indicated, for these projects, you'll have to go through that competitive, sworn process to get the projects funded. It is a requirement of the DOT that you have a comprehensive transportation plan now, but again, they don't fund it unless it's, um, scores well, and it doesn't require the county to fund the projects as well. It includes the current conditions of roads and future conditions, what the steering committee determined they'd like to see in the future. Again, you're adopting, um, should be on the fourth slide, I think, what are, what are you adopting today? Again, we're asking to adopt the highway map, the public transit rail map, the bicycle map, as well as the pedestrian map. Now, since the town of Gatesville will be adopting this as well, however, we've tried to call them, we've emailed them, and we've seen no response. Um, Transportation Plan Branch did draft a letter that was emailed to them, as well as I believe delivered, I think Melissa delivered it to the mayor, we received no response from them, so what we'll have to do is actually cut their portion of the CTP out of the plan, um, to move, so we can move forward with the plan. And then after it's adopted by you, it'll go to MRPO, TAC in July to be endorsed, and then probably, um, August or September, it'll be brought to Transportation to be adopted.
And if I may ask, you have, have received any refusal from them for, for the town of Gatesville?
No, what we indicated in the letter was, um, we gave them, I believe it's ten days to respond, um, because we wanted to set up meetings with them to present, we get into it, I believe it was April twenty-first, and we never heard anything from them. So that was after we'd emailed, and I, I personally sent emails and phone calls, and they were received, and the last, um, going to Transportation Plan Branch, they said we'll send a letter, and this will be the, the last effort to, to do it.
I think we'll ask our county manager to make phone contact or visit with them to just make sure that had it overlooked.
Okay, great.
Melissa did deliver a letter. And delivered it.
And, and I can...
I'll go ahead.
A couple slides, and we'll get to that point too, and you can see what was actually recommended for Gatesville too, so, um, the first map is the highway map, and it really, again, this is a high-level plan, it's a conceptual plan, so it doesn't really state, um, it had, these projects haven't gone through design work or environmental permits, so, you know, the line's on the map right now. Um, once they get in the funding stream, then you'll have the design work, um, and the environmental permits, and, and the county will have more kind of say in how the roads actually work, um, so what the, the major recommendations are, to multilane, um, US-13, US-158, to paved ferry road, um, and this is what Sterling was, um, speaking to earlier, how now they have to go through the competitive process to even be paved. Um, and is it Willie Town or Wilding Town, right? Willieton Road, um, that would be the widest section of it, and then then we'll center road, um, to widen from the state line to US-158. Next map, please. The next map is the Transportation and Rail, there were no recommendations on that. I'm sorry, the next slide.
Yeah, I wondered if part of that would even include, but we don't have it, the rail 's already removed.
There's not an inactive?
No, there's no...
There's not on there anymore, I can make a note for that, if not, yeah. Okay, and we can probably take that out.
And if, if the railroad still owns the right of way?
That's the last thing, then they'll have it all.
The right of way is owned by individuals.
Okay, that's fine, okay, then cheat it, maybe, we'll, we'll take that out. So, we'll take that one out, um, next slide, please. Uh, your next slide is the draft bicycle map. There are portions of NC-32 to upgrade, what these would be, they wouldn't be an actual bike path, they would just be, um, just widening the shoulders some, so that you could actually have bikes, not on the road, but off to the side of the road. Um, there were Sugar Run Road, Sandback, Daniels, Tinkum Road, Taylor Mall, Askew, Turner, Millfarn, Millcreek, Sand across Folly, and then the next slide, please, then we have some multi-use paths indicated in there as well, um, Gates Bank, Willieton, and Patriotic Roads. Now, um, you might recall about two years ago, the county adopted the MR Regional Light Plan, um, and we actually incorporated some of those recommendations into this plan as well, so that the plans actually match. Again, these projects would have to be funded, um, and it would be, you know, the, the county would come to us and say, RPO, please, say please, add this to your list, and then we go through the prioritization process every two years and, and look for funding. And then the pedestrian map shows the actual multi-use bike path recommendations. Next slide, please. So, um, as I indicated earlier, after you adopt the plan, then it'll get to MRPO, TAC to endorse, um, for endorsement, and then to the Board of Transportation. After all that's done, the actual plan will be compiled, you'll receive the appendices, and then you'll have another chance to review it, you won't have, um, the opportunity to actually change the maps because they'll only be adopted, but the language and the document and the spellings incorrect, things like that, you can, you can change.
And like the railroad, please, we can take it off?
I'm gonna ask her to do that, um, we don't actually write the plans, the Transportation Plan Branch does, we're actually, the RPO is actually funded through the NCDOT Transportation Plan Branch, and, um, eight percent of our funds come from there, twenty percent come from our member, member counties, our ten member counties, so Transportation Plan Branch engineer does work on a... So Transportation Plan Branch engineer does work on the plan. Um, she just couldn't be here today, so I will let her know to take that out.
And she'll correct the spell of the same back to the same bike.
Same bike, okay.
Any commissioner have a question or concern, comment?
And if I could touch on, Sterling kind of touched on earlier too, about the STI process. Um, what it really comes down to now is that the state needs more money for transportation improvements. Um, nothing actually passed general some way by crossover deadline. So they, they did give the, the gas tax rate, um, kind of set, so it didn't plunge to the point where we'd lost a lot of money. But there are still, um, needs to be a lot more discussions about where we're going to get these funds from. So until, until we get some, the state brings in more money for transportation, we're going to be kind of, um, not getting a lot of things done. And any more questions?
Thank you. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the maps, the comprehensive transportation map, the, um, public transportation and rail map, the draft bike map, and the pedestrian map?
So, no, so that's what the motion, the railroad.
With the deletion of the railroads and the correction of the spelling.
And, um, we provide a, Melissa, I copy the resolution. It says, it says you're adopting the CTP, you're just adopting the maps, but that's just, they call the CTP the maps. It's just a different way they do it, so. But I will let, um, the plan engineer then take the railroad out. The railroad map down. And then it's the same base.
I'm there.
Yes, sir.
On further discussion on page fifty-two, uh, the resolution.
We are ready, thank you.
Yes, it's longer than that.
Is that what's just?
It'll be changed.
Just to make everything fair and the dates will be changed.
All of course.
Yes, that was a sound, that was good answer, but, uh, we have a null resolution.
I noticed they did change Gates County, so I didn't know if that was a template or, you know, it was supposed to be from Gates County.
No, the Transportation Plan Branch did provide the resolution.
So the motion would be actually for a resolution of page fifty-two?
Correct.
With a risk, if everything needed to be done.
That's right.
Make sure this gets kind of all the way through and the dates.
And the adoption date, the, the map dates, Melissa has that now, it's actually on the maps, it's April thirteenth, twenty fifteen. Um, she just, it says plan date and the actual adoption, the resolution would be today, but, um, she needed the plan date too, so I'll provide that to her.
Okay, I have a motion to be made in second and any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those opposed to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, and next, a Knights delegation is Reba Lee Colling, um, speaking on behalf of Aging and Adult Service Task Force.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here representing the Aging Task Force and one of our initiatives that we're trying to pursue is a senior citizen, uh, senior citizen, senior center. You have a letter before you, which gives you a little background about the process. This is nothing new to the county. In two thousand and seven, the Gates County Agent and Adult Task Force identified the need for a senior center. And in two thousand and seven, the commissioners adopted a resolution to support the board to pursue funding for that senior center. Deals were introduced to NC legislation starting in two thousand and seven and ended in two thousand and nine with passage, but no appropriation. Then after many years, the county agent and adult task force voted April tenth, twenty fifteen, to again pursue the establishment of a senior center for residents of Gates County. The state's population is getting older and it's called a phenomenon. Grain of North Carolina Governor Pat McCrory proposed state budget includes two pages dedicated to the age. And according to the current legislative budget, the state's two point four million baby boomers will reach retirement age and life expectancy will increase. Uh, therefore, their sixty-five-year-old population will increase dramatically during the next twenty years. And by twenty twenty-five, ninety percent of the, of the counties will have more people sixty and older than seventeen and younger. And by twenty thirty-four, the median age will increase from thirty-eight point three years to forty point nine years. And the director of North Carolina Division of Aging and Adult Services made a presentation to the House Aging Committee this year suggesting that North Carolina residents sixty-five and older will increase by fifty-eight percent by twenty thirty-three. And those sixty-five and older were nearly doubled during that time. Currently, Gates County's population can be found on your chart below. And please note that our current median age is forty-two, which is currently one point one years, um, older than the projected North Carolina median age of forty by twenty thirty-four. Therefore, it is urgent that the county moves forward in their attempt to acquire a senior center that will be sustainable over the long haul. The establishment of a senior center will end the legacy of being the last county in the state of North Carolina not to have a senior center. It will also set the stage for establishing the county, county's real intent to recognize the needs of its growing senior population. Extensive research has gone into the types of senior centers, programming, and activities needed and collaborations and funding needed to sustain the senior center. The desires at Gates County Senior Center target residents fifty-five years and older. Will have a full-time program and services that meet the North Carolina Department of Aging and Adult Services senior operations and program evaluation known as Scope Tool and Scoring Guide, which gives it certification. The benefits derived by offering seniors a daily place to meet and enjoy their golden years through socialization, education, exercise, and more is well documented and widely acknowledged as one of the most important contributions the county can provide to its aging population. Additionally, services targeting the elder will benefit from having many of these services under one roof. Last year, the state legislature earmarked capital funds to Cleveland County, working with their elected state representatives to receive a hundred thousand dollars to start the development of the senior center, thus making Gates County the last county in North Carolina without a senior center. Thank you for your consideration and we would hope that you would support our efforts again to establish a senior center in the county. And you have been provided with a copy of a resolution of support for the development of a senior center in Gates County. And this was taken pretty much directly from the last one that you approved with some updates. So do you have any questions?
Let's start, I think all of us agree, our senior services are important to us and we want to be right by them. Um, what do you see, um, as the cost of having a senior center?
It depends on what type. You have two models. You have the developing program, which means it operates in less than a four thousand square space with thirty-two hundred of that, I believe, definitely earmarked for the seniors. Uh, and then you have the full-fledged program. The plan would be, if you had a development center, that it would eventually become a full-fledged program. Uh, but the, um, cost, it depends on what you want your senior center to look like. Do you want it to be a program that follows the scope, which is a fifty-one page, um, per, a model that the state has set for equality senior center, which is your full-fledged, or if you're working toward that. As far as your cost, um, it depends on the type of staffing you want to have and the types of programming and the facility. And you can set a budget based on whether it's developing plan, full plan, and then take it from there. So what we're asking is to try to restart the process of identifying funds through our legislature and having you all to talk with our legislators, legislators to tell them we're interested in trying to get funds appropriated from them. And then we move forward with talking about how we want that center to look, or if this looks like this now, where we want it to be five years from now, or what happened.
And you said that the development center would have the minimum four thousand square feet?
The development center is any square feet. Your, your optimum is four thousand square feet minimum for the full-fledged program, for the state to recognize it as a full-fledged program and to move toward trying to get you funding and additional funding.
Is this providing a normal kitchen as well?
Not necessarily. In two thousand.
Development center does, I guess.
Not necessarily. Um, back when I was on this committee in the initial process, we visited all the senior centers from Currituck, Aquaman's, Pasotank, all around. And they were in various locations, from a house that the county had turned into a senior center to an actual structure being built by the county and in between. And since that time, Currituck has actually built a center for that. And Pasotank has theirs attached to their parts and wrecked. So it's varying degrees of what the facility looks like.
I would, it would seem the reason that if we're the last county to have a senior center and we see that next to the last was Cleveland County by the, the presentation here, and they were awarded a hundred thousand dollars. It'd be pretty hard for the legislature to turn us down, at least at that level, I would think. So I, I would think that we would have the, uh, you know, looking around and trying to decide what we wanted to do and at what level. I would certainly think the legislature would give us a like amount of money as a starting point. But with county websites now, we can probably go and look and find on each county's website, a picture of their senior center and get some ideas as to what other counties have done.
And some senior, some counties have your main senior center and they've branched off with additional ones, uh, just depending on how big and the depth of their population, um, location.
Do you know if the Cleveland County center is completed or they've just gotten their money?
I'm not sure, um, where they are in the stage, but the money was just appropriated last year, so I'm not sure if they've started up or not.
Chairman, Ms. Hott, Reba, do you have any figures on what the other, what the legislatures devoted to other counties as, as pertaining to the?
Um, not, I do not have what they, um, provided other counties before Cleveland County. I do know when Lee Riddick was, uh, was Director of Area Agent that covered Gates County, he was instructed to develop a senior center in each county. And funds that came through Almar Commission, through him, the agent department, they took a hundred thousand dollars off the top and, uh, bugged it to each county to get there started. And every county under him did that except for Gates County.
His hometown.
Yes, and he retired with that thorn in his side.
Any other comments?
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, I think. Oh, man.
I will inform.
Okay, all, um, it might be a, a more advantage to have a son that might be open to all the citizens. It might have to make it possible and then maybe give, uh, certain data for seniors. It's just an idea that might, it might have, you know, to come together, but it might fail. If you can put it all together for everybody, it might make it more possible. That's, that's all.
Your comment for welcome?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm new to government. And just, this is my first time at a meeting like this, so this may be way off pace. Um, I, I completely respect what you're saying and I'm rapidly becoming a senior myself, it seems like I'm fifty-seven. It, it's a choice between money spent here, money spent there, or there's good money in our youth. Because our seniors don't seem to have problems as much as far as, and I'm talking about legal problems as, as much as our youth. I mean, I just want to make that point. I mean, I, I really am sorry, actually.
I mean, you don't have to apologize to me, I just retired and my youth development worked for thirty-three years.
No, it almost makes you cry to think about to make a choice like that. I mean, if there is a choice, I would, if it's not a choice, then it's not that matter, then forget what it's about.
Well, you know, unfortunately for us, a lot of times we have choices in my commit. But I think, um, to maintain a motion to, at least to concede, uh, to start a conversation with our legislators to see if we can get appropriation from the state.
Now, chairman, I make a motion that be adopted to, uh, override the, uh, Agent Adult Task Force to pursue those laws until my legislature or citizen.
Okay, a motion has been made.
One second.
Motion's been made, second. Any other comments, uh, questions? Or concerns? Hearing none, uh, we will vote on support of the resolutions for the development of a senior center in Gates County. All those opposed, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed. So at least we start.
And, and we would like you to promptly start having that conversation, uh, because we would encourage any of our members on our committee and any, any residents here in Gates County that talk with their legislature to let them know the importance of having.
I would ask that, uh, county manager, once chairman has signed this resolution, that we forward it to Howard Hunter. Uh, specifically, we'll be giving Senator Newell's name as well as, uh, maybe you can try to get a phone conversation with him. But certainly we want to make him aware that we all have Senator Cook with our other representative in the county. So we can specifically identify him.
I think we are able to, um, sign the resolutions today and have the party, but I think they were all supposed to be signed. So that's maybe strengthen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I believe that's the last of our Knights delegation. We'll move on to administrative reports. Is it if I need to take a five-minute short story? Well, keep going, well, okay. Administrative reports will start with the county managers.
This is from March twenty-first, directed to the twenty-third Historic Courthouse. Shelley Sasse of Sasse Conservation, William Peet with the Historic Mason, James Andrews, Miss Hopper, and I met April twenty-first for a walk through Historic Courthouse. And following our walk through, Ms. Sasse, Mr. Peet, and Mr. Andrew, discussed construction issues with the building. And Ms. Sasse will be sending a report to us. All departments, the submitted budget request and meetings were held with department heads and the budget will be presented later in the meeting. All CDVG housing recipients have moved into their houses. Sandy Pittman and I met with friends of Noel and their Wooten Company on April the seventh, filled over files to discuss paperwork. And the city is expected to visit in May for file monitoring. Latoya Smith began work April the seventh as complaining and permitting technician. And Michael Parvick began work April thirteenth as a part-time code enforcement officer. Chief Stormy Butts, Deputy Chief Zeller and I had a conference call with Scott Kaufman of the NCACC to discuss application process for the NCACC Medicaid reimbursement program. Mr. Kaufman submitted the application on April the twentieth to the Department of Health and Human Services. EMS should be notified by June if they are extended into the program. For meetings on March the twenty-fifth, Court Commissioner and I attended the NCACC district meeting in Williamson on April the fourteenth. Sandy Pittman, Dr. Barry Williams, Rue Blanchard, Lou Leaguer, and I met to discuss budgetary requests. requests from the community center. On April the twentieth, there was a joint meeting between the Board of Commissioners and the Gates County Board of Education to discuss fiscal year fifteen, sixteen budget. On April the twenty-second, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina met with economic developers of the Northeast at the NC Bar location in Gary'sburg, North Hampton County, and I made a presentation on Gates County. April twenty-third, Christie Crawford and I met with Donna Dixon and Kathy Mansfield to receive quotes for insurance. Quotes that were selected are included in the budget proposal. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any feedback from the comments with the NC Bar?
Yes, actually, I have received one on one building, and I need to get in contact with the building owner to find out a little more information so I can share that with the developer.
Just real loud and clear, I think it's free commission, you want to move?
Sure, Frank.
Okay.
Right. Okay, moving on to our next tax.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Received the tax collector's report. Any questions or anything specifically you want to address with that?
The Keystone and Manusville still being done?
It is ongoing. I will say we are not going live with Keystone as we anticipated as of last Friday. Jerrona Twine, a Keystone representative, well, you're a Mary, and we'll be on site tomorrow. We're, you know, still in testing and looking at that data. And we're actually still running parallel, that is to say, we're using our toolbag Pro Con version as well as Keystone in the activity. We do have one system, at this point, we mimic the other. We just want to keep testing and looking at the data before we cut the strings, obviously through our old server and that old system. So we're still working through, the numbers look good in terms of value with the data conversion. We don't see anything, you know, out of sort with dwelling or outbuilding or land value. So that's, as well as any AR issues, so. But we just want to be sure that testing will continue the rest of this week. It'll be a day-by-day basis, looking at the numbers. We've addressed several issues and cleaned up a lot of the, you know, reports, so they're run daily, so we know that, you know, what to look for, what target areas we want to focus on, so.
Okay, I believe you do have some, any refund?
Um, yes, I am, and I took the liberty to number them. You know, the top, I think, moving forward is, you know, we prepare to maybe redo the work sheet and not even worry about trying to reference a bill or an account number, just refund number one would be, you know, in the said dollar amount, whatnot, so. The initial one, refund number one, is actually an overpayment that, you know, all the literature knows there, the taxpayer paid, the official payment was utilized with the website, that was also money, the balance was credited there, so. This refund number one is traditionally the overpayment that resulted in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-seven cents.
Okay, as you can see, we've got refund number one, you are here, a motion to refund that money?
Remove, second.
Okay, motion's been made, second. Any comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Okay, refund number two.
Uh, refund number two is actually, as are the rest of these vehicle issues where the taxpayer returned in those tags. And as we're always doing, we're checking any accounts, whether it would be real estate or personal property before we, you know, even pursue the ideal refund, in this case, no delinquent taxes or either. And so we have a refund amount of a hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-five cents.
Well, we may see more of that because of what D and B is handling.
Um, obviously, it may be, I would say, a seasonal issue. It seems like sometimes the first of the year, people are trading in something, or there's some activity, they want a new vehicle, but we will see less activity as we, you know, we take off these older builds that we have. But there again, if somebody's, you know, buying a new vehicle, or they want to upgrade, or they've turned it in or sold it, we may still see some of that activity.
I just think that's a terrible mistake.
Chairman, I'd like to make a point on request for refund number two. There's a lot of dead documentation here that helps us, you know, as we look through it, just helps us to be sure that, that we've done our due diligence. So thank you, and your call.
Oh, yes, well.
Chairman, I move that we approve refund number two.
Second. And also I'd like to make that same comment in addition to what Jackson, because that is an outstanding note on there, that there is no tax.
Okay, motion has been duly made for the refund request, the number two, and second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. That's a weak ayes, guys. Okay, all those opposed?
I will ask also that we include the bill of sale in order to get a refund, or are the citizens required to provide a bill of sale other than the other documentation that you have, or is that just something?
Traditionally, no, the Machinery Act, in order with the general statutes, there's no really language that dictates of what they provide. And oftentimes, those citizens, we do ask the question, and it does help us, and it helps you folks make that decision, but the Machinery Act doesn't really specify any actual documentation, like they request a refund, bring that receipt, that simple one-page receipt form in from D and B, you know, requesting a refund if they turned in tags, and that's really validates a, or initiates that refund process, so. But we usually ask for more often, but we, they don't really have to provide if that receipt is, you know, per Machinery Act is validation enough often, but.
Hold them accountable, act of fact, we've got signatures on them.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, with that. So it does kind of reinforce what we're doing with the refund process, so that's kind of why we ask, and we make copies, and any information or documentation they supply, we, you know, we kind of include it with their refund request, so.
Okay, refund number three?
Um, refund number three, in the amount of a hundred and one dollars, thirty-three cents, also a vehicle that tax returned in.
Okay.
Chairman, I move that we approve that, number three, second.
Motion's been made, second, in discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor say aye. All opposed?
And refund number four, also a vehicle issue, tax returned in, the vehicle is sold, of course, that bill of sale with the documentation is also referenced there for you, in the amount of a hundred and three dollars, excuse me, a hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents.
And a motion?
Hello?
Motion's been made, second, comments? Yes.
Bill of deed, that part of it.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's quite a simple.
Gates County. Yeah, you know, former Commissioner Frank Rentry, his address really is Beverly Deere, but he chose to have a P O box, but have miles. So all that road is.
And it did get my attention that they were next door neighbors.
They're brothers too, but anyway. If you live in a small place, you know everybody. Refund number four. No, yep. We have, all those in favor, we have done that on four, y'all? I'm sorry.
Go ahead and look.
We're on the road, didn't, we have motion and second. Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those that are opposed. Okay, approved.
Okay, this man, refund number five, final one, also a tag or submitted, it's certainly in vehicles, unfortunately towed, so no delinquent taxes with regard to the taxpayer account anywhere. The refund request is in the amount of a hundred and seven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Okay, a motion?
Remove, second.
Motion's been made, second, comment?
Yes, just want to make a note that there's a letter in here from the insurance company that says we determined the vehicles were towed.
That's true. Okay, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, Kathy, does Kathy have anything?
Um, I don't. Of course, as we are, we did the meeting, we're boarding an hour ago, that meeting will be continued next week, and we should, Melissa has some information for you in your packet that you can look at, and I'll be available for any questions as we approach that window of time. And I just want to say a special thank you to the office staff, as always, Betty Shelley Lord, Finance Department, Sandy, Marie Diane, and Mrs. Circus working with us, and of course, Renee Dimas as the Consulting Manager with the tax software upgrade. I just want to say thank you and with your advice, patience, for you as we move forward with the upgrade and the data converting, so appreciate your time.
I can add that just for you. We got some information from you regarding the property that was the tenor of the county. We going to talk about exploitation of?
Um, yes, I would think so, it might be better suited in that environment, but, yes, sir, I would say the sensitive nature, it might be better suited, yes, sir.
Back to Mr. Jordan, that's action.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance, do you have the reports or any questions?
I have, we are making sure all the departments have our preparation for this year that they have taken care of.
As you will have new words about the legislation between now and of course, you will have to clean it up hopefully by the first meeting.
Okay, any additional department reports? I think I'm something, some of those have scattered, that were here earlier. Okay, articles of interest?
I'm not sure, I wouldn't make a, can you hear it still here?
No, no, that's where I looked up.
Get our badge or report for revenue, state that. Eighty-five, twenty-one, twenty-three. I want to bring, bring to the attention of the board that our sewer impact is, we have nineteen thousand dollars worth of activity this period, which is, I believe, is a direct result of the assisted living, so. So that's a great plus for the Fordham, we already realized, you know, some benefits of bringing that facility on.
Thank you, Jordan.
We get budgeted a thousand dollars, we have only nineteen thousand, nineteen hundred percent greater than what we had this day. Just want to bring that.
And I appreciate that fact, and certainly, and that eighteen thousand dollars is very much appreciated, at this time of year when we're talking budgets. And also for citizens of the county to know as well. Okay, then you've noticed on our county calendar, we have a busy month, we may, if you notice, we have budget sessions next week on Tuesday and Thursday. We have a night meeting on the eighteenth, before that, we have equalization and the revale forward meeting, and then as far as we know, that's it.
I would ask for it, if it was possible, we could move that twelve meeting, I have a commitment on the night, if it was possible, certainly, I would appreciate it.
I thought we had put it up earlier in the day.
The fourteenth is at two o'clock.
It's, I mean, why is the pleasure forward? Is it another date that is more peaceful during that week?
The time of the meeting is fine for me, so if there's another date, I'm not, I'll be okay with a date. I'll be good, if anybody wants to recommend it.
I do have a conference on the fourteenth.
I have something on the other, but, um.
We've voted on these dates back in the, um, February. These are the, we have February something.
So we have issues with the eleventh and the thirteenth, other members?
Could we move it up a couple hours, or back out here, Mr. Jordan?
Well, we've got, you know, we're.
Well, there's, that meeting is not scheduled, I remember, it's only meeting on the eighteenth, but.
Now, we will be meeting on the twelve.
No, you will be at four o'clock.
Yes, we do have one scheduled appointment, two or do you want?
Okay, but we could meet, start the budget before then.
So the date or the time, just the time.
So then we start at like, at two on that day?
I V R, it's at two.
It's at four.
At two o'clock.
Five o'clock wouldn't take, surely that meeting wouldn't take more than an hour.
Um, not with the one appeal, it should not, usually fifteen, thirty minutes, just that one, one appeal. I mean, that's all we have scheduled now.
And we don't have any schedule for the eighteenth?
Um, we don't, we don't have any, no, ma'am, not scheduled on, on the eighteenth itself, not ever yet.
But we have to keep the date open.
Yes.
Well, now, I'll just think, could we shift that hearing to that date?
Uh, we could, I could contact the taxpayers and see.
If they could come in on the eighteenth at six o'clock, because we've already scheduled that, and then we could have, you know, the budget moved up.
Okay, I will, I will make contact with the taxpayer and see if the eighteenth, any particular time on the eighteenth?
Well, it was scheduled at six.
Okay, at six, all right.
And we can do it at six o'clock at night?
Okay, yeah.
And then we begin the budget meeting at four, is that?
Sure.
Okay, going to old business, our first item, we have been a couple years ahead, our first old business is the performance to the planning board and board of adjustments. Ms. Statice, I believe, is here, and I think at the last board meeting, we asked her to do some research for us concerning the number of terms and the placement of like a better word.
Okay, I did look into the general statute. The only thing that the general statute has is for the board of adjustment. It does state in the statute that it is for a three-year term, but it does not state the number of terms that a person can serve. And for the planning board, they did not give a timeframe as long as how long the term should run, or the number of terms.
Okay.
And I looked in the commis section and the city section, just to make sure, because they do transfer over.
And you went back through the potential cities or to look as well?
As best I could. The only, there was, the only thing we had was for the board of adjustment in terms of going along. As best I could, um, the only, there was, the only thing we had was for the board adjustment in terms of going along with the general statute. Um, there was nothing stated in any of them in this board planning board at all.
Um, but we do have some vacancies to fill on these boards.
Yes.
For the planning board, we have three vacancies, is that correct?
We have three people, um, that are on there, um, that are, it's not really vacancies, it's just that they have reached their three, they have their three-year term.
Okay, so we, in your packet that you received, you have applications, um, from the citizens who have.
Just before we move there, um, I looked at the general statute and the general statute said that, uh, the county commissioners could initiate a planning board by ordinance. And, uh, I'm not aware of the ordinance that we have on the website. However, uh, in the past, we had ordinances that the old-fashioned way, that were in booklets and manuals and so forth. Have you researched to see if there was initial ordinance where the county initiated to?
The.
To go down the planning board.
And I just, we do have, um, we have identified that the county will have a planning board in the zoning ordinance itself. So, we don't have a separate planning board ordinance, but we do have the planning board identified in the zoning ordinance and in the subdivision ordinance.
They'll have one, but it doesn't give any to citizens.
It just identifies that they exist, it doesn't give any rules or regulations in terms of terms and limits and things like that. I have prepared something that I will be taking to the planning board at the end of this month for approval to put more structure in the planning board and board of, um, board of adjustment. So, um, but what we have currently in the ordinance, it doesn't give any term limits or the number of terms they can serve.
So, you'll be making a recommendation to those boards to be brought for us prior decision?
Yes, sir.
For change?
Yes.
Well, do you think it's going to look like what we've been doing in the past? We set a pattern of serving two-year, two terms. And that's, we can't find it right, but certainly that's what we've defined by over the years.
Yes, and that was something that I had also, um, that we had discussed at the last meeting, um, how many terms you wanted to, um, allow a person to serve before they rotated out. And also how we were going to set up, um, identifying the core members of each board, whether we were going to do it by township or whether we were going to do it by voting district. So, I was waiting on, kind of, to kind of get a little clarification on that from you guys. And then I was going to put the final touch on what I had already prepared and send it out to the planning board to review. And we were going to discuss it at our meeting at the end of this month.
Melvin, do you find in the evidence of the creation of the original planning board?
Um, no other than what was stated in the original ordinance, um, from, I think, can't remember if it was in the eighty-eight ordinance or one of the subsequent ordinances where the planning board was identified.
But I was just in the zoning ordinance.
It was in the zoning ordinance and in the sub, in one of the older subdivision ordinance.
But then, but then it just stated that it existed?
Yes. Yeah, it did not, yeah, it just stated that there was, um, based county designates the planning board to exist and that is it.
Power to be provided.
Right. And it really didn't even state their duties, it just stated that they existed.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We're at a point in this, uh, in this topic where, um, we can't actually refer to a prior date or prior, um, function of the selection, the terms or anything. So, it's time for us to get that in, in the ordinance. And, um, and we, we do need to take, take into consideration what we saw, the sort of precedent that we've set. But because it's not an ordinance, when you're making your, when you, your board are deciding these things to bring before us, certainly take that history, but don't be bound by that history, is what Jack Davis would say to the commissioner. Don't be bound by that, but it has worked, it has worked. But if there's a better, if there's a better way to be determined of the recommendation, I mean, don't find yourself critical just because it was done a certain way. But it has, it has worked.
And when I, when I did write, um, the, um, sort of plan, um, to have the planning board, um, added into the ordinance, I did research and look at other, um, what other communities had been and how they prepared it and how they set it, set their board up. Um, so, I mean, I found some things that I liked, some things that I didn't think was going to work very well here. And also, I thought about things that we were doing currently and didn't want to change, just like changed everything. So, I did do some research and look around and see what other communities were doing.
And I think over time, ours has changed because I've had one gentleman say all that for years and years. Um, and I think then they got into the rotation. Uh, and I, I call it written name somewhere, and it might be that we just can't put our hands on it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is.
We can't find it, so it doesn't, yeah, that's new here.
I'd also, I'd make a comment just before we go too much further is that, um, you know, we had a question about this at the last meeting, but I've noticed one of the individuals that came and spoke on that, I expected to see an application in here to serving here, but I didn't see that application. And that, we haven't received one from anybody other than what we have, okay? So, we really don't have to, uh, I mean, we need to move forward today, so I guess we'll just move forward with this. And, and the terms and all that stuff will be decided after the back.
Well, it would be gradually and.
Because we don't know what they are.
Well, I did write it to, to where people were still doing a three-year term.
Excuse me, but our issue is, and I appreciate, I know what you, what you're saying, but it's not an ordinance, so it doesn't mean anything.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
I'm saying it's the same. I mean, but you have the option of saying, well, we'll just appoint them for a one-year term or a two-year term. Um, it does, I think it does need to be stated how many years, um, that a term is, is for. So that when we send out the letter, the individual is aware, I'm aware, um, so that I can know when the person needs to reapply or, you know, how we're, you know, how we're going to proceed. Because just leaving it open, it, you know.
What we need to do, as we appointed that, we have, in the last few years, we've appointed for three-year term. To say that these people are appointed for a three-year term. Then in the future, if it's changed, these people will serve their three years and to, to get the, if it's a different timeframe.
Right.
So, in the motion that we made by these, we would need to include that it's a three-year term.
For all positions, so, little hearing.
Okay.
For, for further consideration too, as an informant and to that board, should we even think about in the future, when, uh, when that person's timed up, taking a recommendation from the board and from Mrs. Baptiste back to along the applications? The person is rotating on, recommendation for that person to, um, remain on the, for an additional three years or two years?
Now, let me, um, is it a medication process, none of that to?
Well, I think, I understand what you're saying, certain, your planner works with the, with the planning board. And, uh, you know, there's knowledge of how successful each one is working by both parties. You know, this is an appointment by the commissioners and it seems like the commissioners should be aware of, you know, what issues may be coming up and what type conflicts or whatever between the board and, and, uh, and the planning director. I think the person would be cleaner if we did not put the planner in that position. I mean, I, you know, there's merits to it, but, uh, put any planner in that position to, to provide a recommendation for the board members, uh, I think would feel a little bit more than what you want the people to follow in this board relationship, uh, with the board. So, I would, I would, I would encourage us not to add that on to the support, appointment.
I haven't discussed this for, it's ironic that you mentioned that, uh, Mr. Friggin', um, I had a conversation last week with someone. You know, we have, we have an application here, I mean, from a resident that has not been in our county for, for very long. Application looks good, qualified, and, um, but I was talking to two individuals last week that I would like to see us add a line on here that says sponsors. So, that big, that individual, because he has been history with us, we have been history with him or her, that they may have a neighbor, they may be in a rural town club, they may be in a local church or whatever. That person, their application looks great, but we don't know anything about it. And, um, it's not, uh, I, I agree with you on not putting the, um, planning director in that position. But I think, I think if we would be helping that individual and the county, if that person had a sponsor. If that person can't find the sponsor, then that's, that's answering the question for us about the application.
What, very well taken?
That's just a, that's just a point that, uh, I would maybe like the commissioners to entertain and maybe the planning board to, to, you know, take that down and, uh, see if they think that's a good thing. And I, and I was planning on mentioning that anyway.
I have been in counties where, um, prior to the application being considered, the representative for that voting district, um, for county commissioner, the county commissioner actually have to sign off on it after speaking with the person. So, um, that's not an irregular, an irregular thing to have a sponsor or even to speak with the commissioner that represents that district.
If that sponsorship came from outside this, this table, then it would be even stronger. Because if Mr. Jordan puts his name out there as a sponsor, he's expecting, he's expecting. So, so it would be even, I understand your point, it would be good that one of us knew that individual, but, uh, yeah, if it came from our citizens.
Well, I just want to use that as an example, that it's not an irregular thing to have on the application.
Okay, I certainly think that we don't need to put the planner in an adversarial position because if the person, if he did recommend, they got on board, I can see an adversarial position occurring. Um, your comments about sponsor, I don't like the word sponsor, I think maybe I would have a, or a reference, um, you know, a person to, to call for reference, um, sponsorship seems to be, um.
Sounds like a doubt.
Uh, but just the terminology aligns me a little bit.
I see you taking notice on your comments.
Yes, uh, getting back to the point at hand, um, the appointment to the planning board that we need to do, we need to appoint three individuals to the planning board for a three-year period of time. That's what we have done in the past and until we have a new policy, that would be, I think, what we should follow. Uh, we have in our packet, individuals who have sent in applications to, uh, to obtain a motion. Can we do it, can you do it one at a time?
Ma'am Chairman, if, if you have no objection, I would like to recuse myself on this one, or I don't want there to be any appearance of contest for it.
I understand the point, I believe if someone's refused, we have to agree to refuse. Mr. Belton has asked to be refused for this, what is the pleasure of the board?
I think a motion that, uh, Mr. Belton's request, the honor.
I second that with understanding.
Okay, the request says, uh, the motion has been made in second to Mr. Belton to be allowed to be refused from this, this, um, planning board adoption, um, performance, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And Mr. Belton is refused for the planning board?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I had a applicant that I want that motion on and, uh, that, that individual is from York and I do want to preference my recommendation that we had previously discussed, that we would have no more than two from township. Having said that, I'd like to nominate Jonathan Jones for the tall township on the planning board.
Okay, a motion has been made, Jonathan Jones be appointed for the tall township.
I'll second that one.
The motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion is for a three-year period, Melissa. Okay, we need a, we have three arguments left.
Madam Chair.
I have a choice. Uh, I also like to make a motion to nominate, uh, Brenna Felton for planning board to determine.
Okay, a motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made in second, Brenna Felton to be approved for a three-year term, um, additional three-year term for. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're getting weak, Jack. Uh, all those opposed? Okay, um, Mrs. Felton is appointed for a three, additional three years. Okay, and then we have one.
You're saying one, one.
I know, we see, but that's. I mean, I believe, uh, Mrs. Baptiste, it has, we need one from Mittensville.
Um, yes, we do, we do not have a representative from Mittensville on either board.
Well, uh.
I know.
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to say, since we're not restricted, at this present time, the term is, um, if we, we do have an application from, uh, we have to, to appoint him for a lesser term, um, to see if we get, if we can do the, from somewhere event here. But, but that's the issue is that, you know, I mean, I know sometimes we're going to have more than, uh, one representative from one township, but many times we don't have citizens that are willing to serve and, uh, you know, we can't hold up appointing members because we don't have applications if you've got people that are citizens that are willing to serve. But I think that, uh, you know, he has served in the past, uh, he's, he's served in the special ability and, uh, I would, I would make a motion that we go ahead and appoint him. him.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion has been made as second, and are you, um, doing a three-year term as well?
Well, it's, it's, it's currently, uh, a three-year term is open, and, uh, you know, I'm willing to adjust the, the motion, uh, have the pleasure of board, but I don't have a problem with three-year, as you say.
I agree, I think three years is appropriate.
I like three years, I think the motion's made on a three-year court.
Okay, a motion has been made as second, uh, to appoint Wade Askey for a three-year term.
Madam Chair, this is, um, certainly not opposed to that application being approved, um, and, and won't fight that, but as, if I were an individual in Middensville, I've got to wait three years. I know I did come forward today, but I decided, decided next year, or two years from now, I have to wait three years for them to have representation, and I just, I just simply make it as a point of, of thought in, in our vote. I, I don't intend to, to vote against the matter, um, but I'm, I'm wondering if, having made that statement, if a three-year term is appropriate for the, for the situation.
I did personally talk with citizens, ASIPs in, in Hoxville, Middensville, and they asked me that what the process was to get on the planning board, and I explained it to them, and I thought I was gonna sue the county, but they're not, so, you know, they had to do some discussion with, uh, with the resident in, in Hoxville, and, uh, but they don't have it.
And I need to contact a person, a person in Hoxville, and we do have an application, uh, and, uh, and, yeah, I think he could, Dan, yeah, he could have the wrong thing. Um, you know, he was, I told him on line, and he said, you know, he was, so he was hampered and, and he-
Madam Chairman, I might ask, Ms. Baptiste, is there gonna be another opening coming up soon, planning board this year?
Um, I was looking, I believe, I believe we will have somebody, um, oh, um, well, I believe we'll have only one position or two.
Do you think that, uh-
I think we're gonna pull it up here, this, um, this is a state board.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
I know there's a motion for, but there's always the May 18 meeting, and then they don't make nineteen, but someone called in during the May 18 meeting, different ones that's made. If there is a concern, if you're not sure about what Mr. Trump is wanting. I, I don't have a happy of the, um, yes, I do. Um, yes, we would have two that would expire, um, next year, um, one, one is Mr. Carter and-
He's up for reappointment.
Yeah, he would, well, his term would be expiring next year, whether he applies for reappointment. Um, and the other is Phyllis Bunk with Hops, and, um-
See, all of those are in areas that are filling up one representative, yeah.
Certainly, uh, Madam Chairman, if you feel this is a mistake, then as you're the planning board, I don't have a problem with rescinding my motion until the evening meeting, see what the citizens believe, if not, then we get to the board.
He can't look to the office, he wasn't completely sure before he was applying for it, he thought it may extend the board's adjustments, and he will insert on either.
If I rescind the motion at this point, and we go over there, if we wanna have more discussion on how to move forward.
Please second the motion.
I, I second it, I have a little bit of a problem if you don't know what you're planning for.
Well, I think sometimes the, uh, the wording about different boards sometimes may be-
Too similar.
Too similar, um, and I know in our discussion, um, I was with the Board of Adjustments, I said, you know, you know, I remember making the statement, if proceedings are only can be appealed to the Superior Court. So, I don't know, I was just talking about both, that, you know, and I'm, you know-
There's some overlap in communication.
Yeah, so.
How many other positions do we have for the Board of Adjustment?
We have, we have two alternate positions open.
Madam Chairman, would the, uh, would best solution to motion forward be to vote on, uh, what is the motion to make and address Commissioner Jordan's, uh, issue on May 18 meeting?
Okay, the question, he has rescinded his motion.
Rescinded.
He has rescinded his motion, and, Mr., Commissioner Felton?
I want to make this motion back to my-
Yeah, if somebody wants to make a null motion.
Yes, ma'am, I would, I would make a motion if, uh, Wade Askey is required for the planning board to be considered.
Okay, that motion has been made, is there a second? Here and there, sir, if that, or, that does, uh-
Madam Chair. I believe that we address the vacancies that are in the applications that are not clear at our May 18 meeting.
You made a motion to wait until the May 18 meeting to reexamine the applications that are not, we have chances to reexamine the applications that are not clear.
For the other positions.
For the all positions. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, that motion has been properly seconded for discussion. Okay, the question will be, and I want a motion to delay on additional appointments until we can clarify the applications, applicant's desires.
Correct.
Um, until the May 18 meeting. Okay, did everybody understand the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we have two, and Melissa will send out the list that's on the report, and do you pay eighteen?
Nineteen.
No, they're eighteen.
Yes.
Okay, the Board of Adjustments?
We have two alternate positions, um, well, we have two alternate positions, and we have, um, Mr. Germin, when he was appointed by you guys in December, he was only appointed, um, for like six months only, y'all see him? So his, um, his position is also coming, and I did speak to him, he didn't turn, he didn't turn in an application because I only had a chance to speak to him on April twenty-eighth. Um, then he is interested in serving again.
So he did not turn in an application?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Chairman, I, we have one position, Commissioner Germin, for reappointment, and we have two alternate positions available. Our motion that we, we appoint Commissioner Germin to serve a regular three-year term, and, uh, Mr. Larry Pressnell and Willie Hopler have served at all.
Okay, a motion has been made, uh, that can Germin be appointed to a complete term, full term, that Willie Hopler would be appointed as an alternate along with Larry, and your question, Pressnell?
Question.
Pressnell?
Pressnell.
Pressnell, be appointed as alternates. We have, you got motion's been on the floor, we had it second in the discussion. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Okay, so, they have been notified from the board on May the nineteenth as well.
Madam Chair, I have a question for our county manager.
Yes.
On our website, these board devices, are there people who occupy positions? Is there any answer?
I don't know, but I was gonna say, um, I don't know.
How does the term, are they out beside their names?
I don't think so.
Another consideration for must be considered.
Well, all of this, I, I had to, um, most of this information, I had to actually go back through the minutes, um, from the county, previous county commissioners' meetings to figure out when this person was appointed and on and on. I didn't have a sheet.
It's not your fault.
No, no, I mean, and I, I really didn't even have a sheet to go by to figure out, okay, this person is this, so, it took, you know, it took a little bit of time to go through every, all the minutes to figure out who was and who wasn't actually on the board.
Well, there were sheets of that information on it, because the planning board members each had one when I was on there, that we were given it the first of each year, um, but, but we had, we've had a lot of change personnel, I don't know where the records are. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make a comment, I was, I know you talked about sponsorship for now, I did like the reference that are actually, but, um, is it possible that there could be appropriation there, or is that something that sounds unoriginal, a lot of jobs involve that? I mean, I, that would be one way, you, you could possibly test out somebody that was highly qualified, you wouldn't even know it.
Something harsh to consider, certainly, um, that we can look at, that, well, with the alternates, uh, that gives us opportunity, or seeing, I mean, people attending the meetings and, uh, attendance is really afforded at these meetings, um, so it gives us an indication of, of like, the desire of the person to be a, to act. But thank you, that's certainly something to consider. Okay, moving, uh, along, I believe Sandy's up with budget amendments sixteen, seventeen, and eight. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, I was jumping down too. I was hoping we would do this. Okay, I think it is time for us to take a break, it's twelve thirty at my PDA. Five minutes. Come on, Mr. Felton.
I get up to it.
Okay, um, the next order of business is a review of fee schedule.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move, make a motion on that part of our meeting today, um, I need more time to study that, I've heard from some others the same, and I'd like to table that matter, uh, for my meeting today.
Okay, a motion's been made to table the review of fee schedules, give us more time, opportunity to study and getting some additional resources and information. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made as second to table the discussion on fees and fines, ordinance, uh, until the, maybe the May eighteenth meeting.
I would agree, that's part of my motion.
Okay, um, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we'll table that. Uh, business?
No, really, that should have been a budget amendment, there is no update from Ms. SASS.
Okay, moving to new business. Uh, we have the audit contract with Martin and Sterns to work at, Ms. Pittman?
She stepped out, but this is from-
She's stepping in.
Okay, this is from Martin Sterns Audit Contract, and you have a letter set forth before you, that would just need your acceptance in order to continue contract with them for the upcoming year.
Okay, this is a firm that has worked with us for the last several years, um, as you agree, they basically do, do the same functions that they have done in previous years.
Madam Chairman, is there a recommendation on this, this document we're looking at?
Ms. Pittman?
I'm sorry, I'll just let you take that. Are we looking at the Martin Sterns contract?
Yes. Uh, yes, we have discussed, um, putting this out for bid to look at a different firm next year, it's too late this year to do that. Um, the contract for this year is fourteen hundred and fifty dollars more than last year, so the fee is, is relatively the same. Um, there will be a different group coming out this year to do the audit, so for the last three years in a row, we've had different people, so it's not like, you know, we're, we're stuck in a rut, the same people are coming out of every year, so, I would recommend we sign the contract this year, and then we put it out for bid probably in late summer, early fall, to look at making a change if you all want to, I don't know that it's something we need to, but I think we should put it out for bid at least periodically, as you all have discussed. Um, the contract itself is created by the LGC, so it's not a contract that they've created, the state actually creates these contracts, and it's their form that we use.
What about the date of delivery?
The date of delivery, are you talking about October sixth, October thirty-first?
Is that in there?
This is just the letter. The contracts, the contract didn't make it in there?
Is there just the letter?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, I thought you all had the contract and everything. Yeah, the, the contract is the same, and the audit is, the due dates are set by the state as well, they're due October thirty-first of every year, they give them a month if they're running behind till December first, before we have to make any amendments to the contract. Last year, we were so late because of issues with the state. The reason the audits did not complete, get completed in time last year is because the state did not have data the auditors needed, and every county was late last year. Um, the contract does specify that it is due to the LGC by October thirty-first, two thousand fifteen.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt this letter, authorize this letter to be signed, uh, with the understanding that the date of delivery is October thirty-first, specified in the actual contract.
Yes, so what I need is, is a motion to approve the contract as well, the contract in full.
And the contract, if it's in.
Okay, a motion's been made to approve the, a letter and contract with, uh, audit firm Martin and Sterns for the coming year. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, um, any discussion? Okay, all of those in favor of going, uh, to continue with, uh, our current auditors, all those to, um, let's, I'm getting some time, let's, uh, let me start over. All those in favor of continuing, um, with the Martin and Sterns Audit Contract, and we'll sign the letter as well, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now we have budget amendments, um, Ms. Pittman?
Yes, we have budget amendment sixteen and seventeen in your packets, and the eighteen was on the table this year. eighteen was on the table this morning, and I apologize for the late submission of that. Number sixteen, the EMPG grant that we get every year, we estimate the number for that grant, and we receive the final number for the funding late in the year, and we receive that number for this year, and it's an additional eight thousand two hundred twenty dollars over what we budgeted. So this amendment is to increase the revenue line and expenditure lines associated with those grant funds.
Okay.
Emergency Management Performance Grant?
Performance, I think so.
Yes, sir, we do this every year.
Okay, do I entertain a motion?
So move, next.
Okay, a motion's been made second to approve the budget amendment number eighteen concerning the EMPG. Sixteen. EMPG Grant Fund, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Number seventeen.
Number seventeen is to increase the revenue and expenditure lines tied to drug enforcement. There was a vehicle that the county received through a court order through a drug case, and when we auctioned the vehicle off, the funding has been added to the drug enforcement line from the sheriff in his budget, so that he can use it for drug enforcement activities.
Entertainer motion?
My motion is approved. Right.
Second motion's been made, and seconded that we approved budget amendment number seventeen concerning drug enforcement budget. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
And then number eighteen is to budget funding for a grant that we've received through Department of Homeland Security. This is going to be used for the training exercises coming out the next week that you all discussed, or I guess the next two weeks we're building in. There is no county money involved here, this is strictly grant revenue, and the expenditure loan is offset that grant revenue.
Entertainer motion?
So move, second.
Okay, a motion's been made seconded for the budget of the Department of Homeland Security Grant for emergency training, budget item eighteen amendment. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed. That one's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, GIS update and recommendations.
This has been, I know we have talked a couple of times in the past about some of the issues that we are having with our G I, our current GIS system and our current provider. We had a meeting recently, the county manager, the legal man, myself, and Ms. Kathy Lane to further discuss some of the issues that we are continually seeing and continually having. The, most of the problem is that even when Kathy Lane submits information to the company to update the system and to clarify some things, it is not being done, or it's not being done in a timely manner. And I'm also having some of the same problems, because when we go to issue permits, first thing I do is, I look at the GIS to make sure the information that they're presenting is relatively correct and that they're going to be able to meet their setbacks. Without having accurate GIS information, we don't know if somebody is actually building on another person's property. So it's really becoming a big issue, and a, perhaps a little bit of a liability for the county, especially when we go to issue a permit to someone to build. So, we, during the meeting, we discussed several options that we have to try to get some of this information corrected. We could either talk with our current vendor to try to see if we can get something, get some kind of dialogue going and get things corrected, or we can put out a request or proposal to see about getting another vendor altogether to come in and try to clean up the situation that we have. Because as we move more into digital age, people are relying more on our GIS and the information that we have on the website. We have banks that use our system, real estate agents, the taxpayer, and on and on, that actually use our system, so we need to make sure that the information that we're putting out is correct and almost accurate information. So, I'm just here to try to get a feel of what you guys want to do in terms of getting this corrected.
I have heard your first two options, is our option being considered by doing it outside, I mean, keep updating our GIS? I'm bringing in.
Yes, my, well, and I've talked with Natalie about it at Brinkland. What my goal is, is to get, with the amount of errors we are seeing, to have someone come in full, you know, full-time on staff, they will probably spend maybe a year or two years just correcting and what we have wrong. Because we have things that they will probably have to go back to the register of deeds, improve deeds and improve maps, so it would be an arduous process. But if we could have a company come in and do it, it'd probably take six to nine months for them, if they come in with a team of people, meaning more than one person, and go through the register of deeds and get everything all situated and cleaned up, it'd probably take them some less time to do it, and then we could explore having a person on staff that could actually do it, and which, I would like to see that GIS person also serve as a planner to help me out and to do some of the things in my, in my department that, when they're not working on GIS.
So your recommendation is to bring someone in, clean it up.
Yes.
But spend a short amount of time, and then eventually have someone in our own system that can do it.
Yes, and I believe with the amount of work that I have, and it would also help Kathy to maintain the land records, and also work with the, in the sheriff's department and DMS to maintain the address points and all of those databases, they will have a lot of work to do to justify having a full-time person in-house.
Do you think the cause of some of those mistakes is some tax revenue that's not correct?
Now, I think actually it's just the rendering on GIS, and I don't want to say that we've got totally incorrect acreage information, but that rendering, as we would click on a parcel on GIS and see perhaps a hole, or as we would call it, a undefined property, you know, we, our records would be incorrect, they're just moving it to that GIS database and getting everything cleaned up, I think, you know, that's the main issue in some other, maybe, you know, we're talking about old deed descriptions as well, not every large acre farm has a survey, so how do we address those, how do we correct those? And as we go forward, some of it we can correct, you know, you get a deed description from nineteen thirty seven utilizing the gum tree and the oak tree and the small pond on the northwest corner, how do, how do we correct those, there is no survey. So, you know, we, we kind of correct the known and move perhaps towards the unknown as we go forward, but I think for the most part, the land records, when we tax somebody, they, they are correct. Now, you know, we might have, we face if somebody does a survey recently and it gets upstaged, maybe it splits, but.
So those, those surveys probably done nineteen thirty seven by T.J. Jessup?
Yes, and old, you know, the old traditional sign off or whatnot, there's people who run places or dates, but.
Who does our current vendor?
Atlas.
Atlas and?
Atlas, yes.
What type of company, on day, on day, international, or just?
Um, they're out of Arlington, and I believe that they just, they're just regional along the coast. I think that, I'm not one hundred percent sure of all the counties that they, that they work with, but I know they, they do ours, and I would like to say that I believe they do verteeds, I'm not, but I'm not one hundred percent sure.
I wondered, as we handle a meeting with them to let them know what our issues are?
We did have a meeting with them earlier, well, of course, the end of last year, right began, so it had to be sometime in November or December, and we did talk over a lot, quite a few issues, and in that meeting it was myself, Kathy Lane, and Herman.
Herman Fries.
With it, yeah. And we did talk over quite a few issues, and I'll let Kathy correct me if I'm wrong, but the issue is that she's finding things that go back to even Renee McInnes had submitted that's not, that hasn't been corrected in the system, or updated in the system.
I've been work, I've been working with this system for, ever since it's been in existence, and this vendor is totally unacceptable. Twelve, eighteen months is not as reasonable, even a small lot, we couldn't have that. Go and do the research, you pull up piece of land, and you don't know the information on there, it's going to be active or not, and it, it really hurts real estate firms, attorney firms, survey type, it's very, very hard to work with when you can't depend on what you pull up.
Let me, um.
Handle that.
Listen, do we have, I mean, I have this in front of us right here in this meeting, but how do we compensate these people? By the amount of work that they do? Everybody?
Typically, what, how, how companies compensated, they, they charge a certain amount, like ten cent, it's between five and ten cent, based per parcel, per parcel that you have in the county. So if you have like, because we have about like thirty-six hundred parcels of, in the county, individual parcels in the county, so they probably, they might charge us like ten cent per parcel.
So it's an ongoing fee?
Yes.
And, so do we pay them quarterly?
I believe, sir, it's a yearly contract, they, we pay them about approaching the seven thousand dollar mark for maintaining the GIS website with all updates, as well as updating the tax codes. When there is an acreage change, uh, for example, with a large farm that broke out several plots and we update our land records, they base, they in turn update those property records, and that's included in that seven, approximately seven thousand in total.
So if we had a farm that was broke out, let's say a hundred acres of farms broke out with five new parcels, we wouldn't get an additional deal for that activity, but when the contract came up for renewal, probably?
Yeah, it would be under the umbrella of that seven thousand dollars, regardless of what's on the chain, of the amount of activity, if we get twenty splits a month, we're not, so penalized, we, we, you know, pay, we're paying on a yearly contract, regardless of the volume of transfers.
But if, if the updates are not being done in a timely amount, you know.
Or correctly.
Or correctly, twelve, eighteen months is unacceptable for update.
I believe previously, and maybe what was touched on when I assumed the role in September, is updates were supposed to be done twice a year. Now, I wanted to, you know, done more frequently, maybe every quarter, who knows, but as Jennifer mentioned, some of those updates that were submitted more than two years ago from splits or corrections that perhaps Renee had submitted, they, they are still uncorrected. The method we, we doing that was a simple Excel spreadsheet, you know, referencing the flat or the survey description and not, you know, getting in habit of mailing the class, they were referencing or utilizing our registered deeds website, we was, Renee, we would build in the flat number and they would see that and make the corrections proper, so.
Well, now, since, yeah, since they're maintaining it, with those gross errors that they make, is that a liability back to them or to us?
No, because of the disclaimer on the website, referencing the GIS, there's the literature incorporated in that statement, when you look at the screen and you agree to enter the website, they built in those disclaimers for that reason, that any errors or admissions. But having said that, the poor performance goes back to, you know, items not being corrected in a timely manner, you, you know, you really can't rely on it at all, I mean, you know, with that, so.
But that's still going to negate the losses.
Oh, absolutely not.
You don't probably, probably as far as saying seven hundred acres, I know we have various properties that's missed a lot.
Do we know how, do we know what other counties, do they service ten counties, thirty counties, and pretty anything on there?
Yeah.
I think more about if we put out a request or proposal, see what companies are out there, what their potential cost would be to come in and take over this type of system. If already got an infrastructure out of the thing, they wouldn't have to start a rat.
Probably belongs to them, though.
I was going to say, you might want to carefully consider if they designed a website, we don't want to get somebody in there that changes, isolating from Atlas, and they actually wrote the website, I'm not sure, Sandy or you know, if they have.
The website itself, we would, if we would go with another vendor, we would, they would, the vendor would have to do another website, but the data, is my understanding that the county owns and paid for the data when it was initially designed, so the data itself.
We don't know that information's wrong.
Yeah.
We own, we own all that wrong information.
Yeah.
And we don't own any of it.
And we've worded a request or proposal in that light.
Well, I, I wasn't aware that where, if we were just doing a due diligence kind of thing, that we needed to do the, some kind of auditing thing, we were just getting solicited bids and stuff, you know, kind of, wasn't going to put it out like we not happy, you know, we kind of don't, you know, but just kind of put it out as, we're doing an auditing thing and we want to solicit some bids to see, you know, be more repetitive than what they.
I would, I would take, I would take a little bit different approach. If we put out a proposal, they're going to see it, we want it to see it, they're under contract with us, they have no leverage on us at all, it's not a fact. They should know that they have strong opportunity to lose the contract, which should make them up their game, and they certainly don't call us, and up their game will call us and say, we'd like to renew the contract, I mean, that puts us in the driver's seat, so I would not be afraid them to have firsthand knowledge that we're, we're recruiting another firm, but, you know, they need to know that we're not happy with their service. I'm not saying send them a letter at this point, but when you're sending out a request or proposal from a governor's standpoint, they're, they're going to know, because they're seeing other ones in other counties, because there are other counties that are not happy with somebody else too, so.
Kathy, the new software we just installed with the tax office, does it have GIS capabilities?
It, yes, sir, it does, it will have what they call a web, a geopass interface, not only can you, well, from the standpoint of viewing some tax bills, that geopass will allow you, with that interface, to communicate and make those corrections immediately with the GIS person, whether it's in-house or the third-party vendor that we currently utilize, so, but that has been proposed, I believe, in the capital outlet there for that service, that, that capability with Keystone will be available.
When we push that magic button and have everything correct, you know, it'd be a simple matter in your office to correct when it comes to interdiction.
Well, actually, from a mapping, well, that, that's right, from a mapping standpoint, and giving those corrected lines submitted, whether our land records person is down hall or whatever process that is, that would be an immediate, like a transfer of an acre or separate one acre or so, that would be an immediate recognition that. separating one acre or so, that, that would be an immediate recognition that that needs to happen, yes, sir.
But it would still need to be drawn by someone and entered into the mapping system and then loaded online.
We really, you know, this has been going on for some time, and, um, and we really, we have to start from the ground up.
We don't have much service yet, but, yeah, we get what the potential cost is going to be. See what, what our liability is. Move forward on that. There's going to be asked along, we certainly got, we got to make it out, you know, we're going to get out. I would, I would make a, we need a motion to move forward with, uh, contacting another company for putting out a request proposal. Whatever's needed to, to see if we can get the GIS more accurate and more useful.
Okay, um, I can make that in accordance, a motion that we do, um.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
That we, um, sent out a request for proposals.
Should have our planner sent out a request proposal, uh, for updating our GIS, uh, and possibly maintain it as well.
Well, we do have several options, you know, to up, to start from scratch, or just revise or update our current one, or? I mean, if you do it, what is?
Now, what would, is that in line with what you had in mind?
Yes.
Okay.
To provide a more accurate description.
And more timely now.
Is it?
Two years inside of September.
Commissioner, is there a timeframe for closing the, uh, proposals you had in mind?
What night is it, nine days?
What would be, what would be?
I would allow her to make that determination.
I second the commissioner's motion.
Okay, that we request RPOs from various companies via GIS, why would you make it more accurate, direct guidance, make it reflect changes, or to start from a scratch position?
I did have a statement, none of this is included in the, that will be presented this afternoon.
Disclaimer from the county manager.
Yes.
But of course, all the old is in there.
You made the yearly service, yes.
And the contract runs the, um, this run fiscal year or the, um, calendar year? That's what I was thinking, that's the, um, calendar year. Okay, motion's on the floor, it has been properly seconded, uh, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Miss Bates, if you could sort it with that, see if we can improve, um, gifts. Yeah, okay. I would, uh, I'm glad Tracy's not here. Well, thank you, I'm glad she is not in here, trying back with the rocker. Oh, man, it's getting, it's running low on fuel, I think. Okay, Miss Batiste, you're just very comfortable today.
Um, I did include a packet, um, for this month, um, the proposals that we have received for, um, to do the camera range plan for the county, and I also gave out a copy of, um, with my recommendation of who I believe would do it, do the best job for the county.
I, I know, when I look at this, I saw that, uh, Holland Consulting was the lowest price, and, uh, I know you thoroughly looked at the proposals.
And I call the references.
Yes, and, uh, certainly the lowest price is what I'm, you know, that's good to me, but they aren't true to the best.
They are. They, they have an awesome reputation in, in this area, um, they've done several plans in the area, and most importantly, and what we really need to, um, take into consideration is that they're, they have a, they are known to get their land use plans passed and adopted by the state, which is what we really need, by being a camera community, we have to submit the plan to the state. So that is something that we need, we need somebody that has a reputation of being able to get through the state hurdles with, without much resistance. And they have, they do have a reputation for being able to do that, and they have done it for several communities in the area.
This is for, for completely scrapping the one we have, it's our move.
Um, we would do it, it's for, really, it would be, we wouldn't really be scrap, completely scrapping the one that we have, um, and it wouldn't completely be an update. Um, rules have changed since the last time, um, the land use plan was done in two thousand and three, so we really need to drill down and update the whole thing, but we won't get rid of what we have. We will look at what we had, and if we, you know, some, if some of that is still applicable, we'll carry it forward and work on that as well, make sure that isn't put into the plan. But there are plans and policies that are in place that we have to take into consideration since it was done in two thousand and three.
And this will be one plan with camera in, inclusive in this plan, so it's not two plans.
Yes, ma'am.
There'll be one plan, the land use with camera in.
Yes, ma'am. Because it'll give us some direction on where we want development to go based on identifying, to identify wetlands and special areas and things of that nature, so.
I see that they've done work, the references have worked back as far as nineteen seventy-five?
Yes.
Okay, manager, um, how is this aligned according to?
We have fifteen thousand five hundred budgeted this year, and we've had to discuss what we, our proposal is to pay for, but the work will not be completed this year, um, pay for it and then come back in July and ask for a budget amendment to move fund balance when the fifteen thousand is not spent to finish covering the cost of this, um, land use plan approved.
What about, we said we got fifty budget?
Fifteen thousand five hundred, but we cannot pay it all out this year because the work will not be completed this year.
What's the plan in twenty oh three, finance and loan part by grant?
Yes, um, since that time, the state, because I talked to Charlotte Owen, um, with D, Nancy Deena, they do not offer any grants anymore to assist communities in, um, the camera plans anymore.
Chair, I make a motion that the, uh, authorized the selection of Holland Consulting, uh, at the thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars, estimated cost, starting April and completion by November twenty-fifth. Of course, it's already passed in Star River, so will that change back to, could we go back to December, from May to December, or June to January?
Um, yeah, I think we need to adjust that some things for, um, to June, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, a motion has been made to approve the, um, letting a contract hold itself and to, um, redo our camera land use plan, starting in June and entering, and going to January two thousand and sixteen. Do I hear a second?
Second, second of motion, Holland Consulting planners.
Okay, discussion?
Way over on page one eighty-three, just total not exceed thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars in a contract on a proposal for thirty-one eighth. You haven't seen it correctly, same topic.
That shows potential fee reductions, it's the last page, too. Hers aren't numbered the same.
Oh, interesting.
That's why, that's why I was, I was right to that page.
Yeah, um, at the time, um, in addition, I had requested, um, if, um, an economic development component, um, into the plan. And if you see, it says a reduction of economic development component will result in a five thousand dollar deduction in the proposed fee, so that comes off and then, um.
Possible.
Yeah, the other deduction, we will take those.
It says possible there, and?
Yeah, this is a possible reduction, because it's like a project website in which we're going to do it on our own website, so they won't have to develop a separate website, and also, um, reduce the number of planning board meetings that they attend. Um, I can cover those planning board meetings instead of having them come up with fifteen hundred, I can take that. So that's how we got it.
That's realistic, is what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Okay, a motion has been made to properly second and additional discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so we'll get busy with that.
Uh, thank you.
It is approaching one twenty, and I believe we have informed a lot of people that the budget will start at two.
That's right, but that clock's actually about a hundred minutes past, so, but yes, I, and I can contact the department head too, well. And, well, let's just have him come on back.
Why, why don't we do resolution in opposition to Sunday hunting? We'll take care of that and then go back to the other, because we need to take a break, a short break, um.
If you want, make a motion to modify the agenda.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, yes, to modify the agenda and do, uh, item thirteen under, um, new business.
Second.
And a motion has been made to modify the agenda and properly second and have an discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Um, a prop, I don't think we have the proposal before, I guess we do, on page two oh seven. Uh, I know I've been contacted, and I imagine some of you have been contacted, by people concerned about Sunday hunting. Um, you can just read the resolution, and I do know, um, some of the counties right in us have already approved this resolution. Uh, Chauan, Williams, Camden, and I'm not sure, I, I'm current.
Yes, ma'am, we're the only one in North Carolina that's not.
Okay, we're the only one, um, that this is, as you can read, that it is, it's a day of rest and religious holy day, a day set apart for men by restaurants, time to spend with families. Yeah, it is our heritage to have Sunday as a, um, Sabbath. A lot of people do outdoor activities, uh, people like to horseback ride in the woods, stand their pass, tell them how to be concerned about hunting and shooting.
And Jim?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution in opposition of Sunday hunting. And Gates County.
I second that motion.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution in opposition to Sunday hunting, all those say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, and we'll make sure that the, this resolution gets to the proper officials, the state representatives, and all, because I do believe it passed the vice representatives, it has not, it's not been brought up for the Senate. But we still need to give it to Representative Hunter and Senator Gordon. Because there is vice for opposition in the North. Okay, um.
Will you just tell me what department I can contact or?
Well, taking myself two minutes, let us, um, have a recess or till, till five to consider the budget. Okay, do we need a? Okay, we'll be back here too for budget.
Said there were two in particular.
Okay, we will go ahead and resume our agenda, and we were at FYI fifteen and sixteen budget presentation.
Before you, you have a blue notebook, this can, yes, the blue notebook contains all the budgetary information and reports that we'll receive for department head discussions. You also have before you the Gates County budget proposal letter. And I would just like to get the key budget highlights as outlined in the budget message. Total fat budget is balanced in accordance with North Carolina legal standards. Property tax rate remains flat at sixty-four cent for one hundred dollars in assessed value. The total budget is thirteen million, three hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars, of which ten million, eight hundred fifty-five dollars, nine hundred, excuse me, ten million, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and one dollars is from the general fund. Health insurance rates did decrease for this year. While sales tax revenue, revenue did increase slightly, it was not enough to offset medic aid reductions. For this reason, most departments will see reductions in operating expenses. Agency budget amounts, including Gates County Public Schools, remain at the fiscal year fourteen, fifteen levels. North Carolina Corporate Extension has requested counties to pick up a greater share of employee salaries affected fiscal year fifteen, sixteen. In order to sustain this request on a yearly basis, one full-time position was not funded. Capric funds are included to complete renovation of the E S C building, and funds have been appropriated for property reevaluation to begin this year. I'd like to express appreciation to the commissioners, as well as to the department directors and agency for leadership for the budget submissions in a timely manner, and thank you also to Sandy Pittman, the guy that's throughout the process. There will be a public hearing held on May the eighteenth at the seven P M meeting, and we do have two budget meetings scheduled next Tuesday and next Thursday.
My chairman, there's a motion to receive the budget.
I believe that would be improper, see.
I'll make a motion to receive the budget proposal for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen from the county manager for review and, um, for a discussion before approval.
Okay, a motion has been made that we, um, accept the, uh, passed by, I mean, that has been made by the county manager. We see that we have received from the county manager for the fifteen, sixteen, uh, year. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, and second has been duly noted, any comments or discussion?
And were noted as a proposed budget?
It's proposed. This is a, but we have to take, we have to vote again to approve at a Labor Day.
Have two, make two budget sessions.
Yes.
One next Tuesday and one next Thursday, and down to eighteen, we have a public hearing.
Correct.
All right, we got some more work to do.
It's a nice reading. Okay, um, if no discussion, a motion before us is to accept the proposed budget by the county manager for, um, fifteen, sixteen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All opposed? And we will be scheduling to meet with the departments as well during those next Tuesday and Thursday. Looking at your, the highlights that you have given to us, um... The, uh... Are there any more hits that might be, we become aware of in the end of the year?
For this, this...
I mean, I know the General Assembly is still meeting.
One of the things that was budgeted for, um, if you will notice, the Board of Elections budget has tremendously increased over the past, over the current year's request. That is to the anticipated change to the voting. They are anticipating moving a presidential primary, hopefully February, and then the traditional primary for local governments to be made.
Goes in all, whole complete, yes.
How far down is that on the sheet?
I don't know the numbers, Sandy, do you know the numbers?
It's on expenditure page, the top of page two. I think the last thing I saw in the General Assembly, there was something about March with our presidential primary. But it still doesn't make any difference, it's not going to be in the May.
Correct. It's on the top of page, expenditure page two.
I'm looking at revenues.
I'm just looking at fine print. And not seeing much of it.
Yeah, the page numbers on this schedule sort of the bottom.
And it says expenditure page two.
But I, my question was, do you, from, uh, all the things by the General Assembly, is there unfunded mandates or partial funding that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, they still not resolved, sales tax, of course, and that could have been a changing scenario, but I'm not aware of many others.
Yeah, because once sales tax, um, would give us more money. One of the... The Brian one, representative?
Yes, Brian. The department heads will be receiving this, and they will be prepared for budget meetings.
So any changes that we recommend, we request, um, to put us back recomputing the, um, the revenue equal, rather neutral, is that right?
Any numbers, if you change any numbers, we would have to go back and, depends on which department also. But this is with the flat tax rate, and some of the departments, if you move, if you change money, it will also affect other departments because of the way the enterprise and the water funds are all tied into certain, um, departments' budgets. And, um, unless you raise taxes, we will have to, they'll even further into fund balance.
See if you change, see some of those not funded, that were funded last year.
That is correct. Some places did not send in recommend requests, so that is, in some cases, that's why they were not funded.
And each one was seen, maybe two, four, there were who else?
I know you all work very hard and diligently on this, and try not to muddy it up too much. Sure you expect yourself to do.
Oh, yes.
Some slight changes in there, um, we've moved some things, like we pulled debt service from a separate fund then. I'll try to send out an email with some of those general changes, just so as you're looking through, when you're looking at something and think, it doesn't look like last year, you'll have some idea of the little changes, or even some of the major changes that we've made, so you'll know what you're looking at and can compare it to last year, and know why it can look so strange.
And also, I'm sorry, customer service is listed as a separate department, and administration and finance are combined in the, in the budget. So if you're looking at this current year budget, numbers and comparing it to proposed...
The right, administration, finance.
Finances are together, and customer service is separate. So that will not, you will not really be able to compare this current year's budget with the proposed budget. Yes. And there were reasons for separating them out.
So, in, in those three titles, and then finance and customer service, last year, how were?
Is listed as administration, and that was just county manager.
Included all, all three of them?
No, last year, administration included county manager and clerk, and that was, those were the only two positions. And then financial services included all of finance and all of customer service, which includes the warranty meters and I T. This year, finance and administration includes Melissa and, uh, finance and I T, and then customer service includes the direct customer service representatives, Diane, and the three warranty readers. And another change that was made beside some of the debt service, we moved capital vehicle expenditures, I mean, not capital, excuse me, vehicle purchases back into each departmental line. Last year it was a separate.
And vehicle purchases were in each department?
Yes. And there's actually only two departments that have vehicle purchases in their lines.
And this year, uh, I think when we met with Board of Education, there was no, none of our loans were being returned this year, is that correct?
That's correct.
We pay off the library, and this will be your seventeen, it's next year, we're retired from the job. So we've got a couple more years on our hands. And I did get an email, um, this morning from Rude that says they're still waiting for the prioritized capital outline list from Joe Harold, I mean, he's been out for a couple of days or something, but we're trying to get his time in the week. So we might pass that along.
How would Dr. Clark describe she's budgeted as a tight budget?
This current year's budget?
I don't...
You're talking about the one? The ones that we're in it.
Oh, it's the ones with proposal.
Oh, the ones, they would have described it very tight. I will be honest, I need, to come up with some of these numbers, I had, I started with ten percent cut in a lot of the line items unless there was a contract attached to verify everything, and then had to work from there.
Now, the community center is a separate under this budget, it's not included in schools? No, it's a, it's a separate request, the money goes to the schools, but it is a separate line item, it always has been for us.
That's for, what she preferred to use upkeep oven and some...
And sour limes and cheese and...
Okay.
And, um, well, we budget for schools, we give them a lump sum, even though they, uh, not saying they're going to use it, but we just give them a lump sum and they can spread it out the way they...
For operating, yes, then we give them a lump sum for capital.
Do we, um, do we, can they spread that out as well?
Ca-, for the capital fees for capital.
I mean, that, but, and I believe last year we got a five-year plan for them, about a capital approval.
And that's what she was making reference to, that we've asked for it, and we're still waiting to have.
So that we can see where I see it all.
Is five-year all they're required to do on budget basis?
Five-year? I don't believe that. I don't think they're required to do any of that. And last time, I'm not sure if it was a five-year plan they gave us or just a priority list. I know in the past they've done five-year plans, they're required to do some type of plan for the state, not for us. It's a five-year plan, the only one of those I've ever seen was really almost like a wish list of, these are the things, in a perfect world, these are the things that we should do, but realizing that, you know, with budgetary constraints, what they send to us is, you know, almost...
I think it, maybe about three years ago, maybe four, the state required, then, they didn't have to attach a dollar figure to it on the thing, but they had, I think they had to do a five, ten, and twenty year need, like the capital needs as far as structures. In other words, they have a building that was getting old, and it could, they have the same way to, have them repair it, refresh it, go replace it, that kind of thing. Not through us, but through the, I think they had to, the state, the big, the huge one.
Well, I know last year they had the five-year plan, because they had their dollar values at, because this year was, it was a big increase. I mean, I remember that from the...
I do remember the priority.
Right, yeah, and that, and maybe there was a five-year plan, I recall, I just remember the priority list. I just remember that, you know, the capital might, one year, and I think especially this year, it was a big spot. And, um, I just kind of want to see what they checked off from last year. Well, thank you all for your work, um, it feels like we've got a lot of work to do for now, too, so, um, to read. It, as we all know, it is a struggle each and every year. Especially with these unfunded mandates, and I look forward to extension, that issue, where we have to take on more and more of that burden. That's struggles.
That's actually a thing, everyone could send something, D O T, that can, responsibility coming down the page.
But that's in the General Assembly, that's why, so they have to change that.
Well, thank you, and it will be interesting Tuesday and Thursday.
If we change that to four o'clock, I should add that.
But, yeah, as you know, it's, we said, four on Thursday, Tuesday, and two on Thursday. Okay, um, I believe that completes the new business. We will have citizens' comments, does anyone else sign up? Okay, then we'll move on to the commissioner's comments, I'll start and we'll go on. Thank you everyone for coming, we had a nice group today, and certainly I felt they brought a lot to the table for us to listen to, and we would, we'd love to hear from them, constituents, um, they see things in a different light sometimes than what we do, and we may certainly, hopefully misunderstanders or misconceptions, aye? Please continue to let us know what your findings are, and call us, um, so that we're prepared to, and have a nice rest of the day, and looking forward to seeing you on the eighteenth.
Well, I would like to thank Sheriff Webb for bringing to our attention May fifteenth, the National Law Enforcement, um, Day, and, um, and thanking him also to making us aware of, uh, a former officer who passed away many years ago, as well as the gentleman here recently. I'd like to thank all of our county employees for their service, we've seen some of that today during our meeting, as well as in some of our documentation, and again, I'll bring, draw attention to, um, our finance department and to the, uh, tax office for presentation they gave us in the paperwork thing.
All right, I, I get what my colleagues have expressed, and I do thank everyone for coming and participating in the meeting that was here. I would like to thank our employees for, uh, the jobs they do, uh, the county manager down, to each one, finance officer, so forth, because it takes a lot of work, and a lot of times, it's a lot of no thanks, no thank yous that maybe wouldn't be appreciated, but, uh, we do recognize that it's, you do have quite a bit in front of you, but, uh, you thank the abilities. And, um, I would like to say to the citizens that we hear you, and, uh, I, I, I would ask Sheriff Webb to say something, but I don't, I haven't talked with him previously, but I, I, I heard the concern about the citizens, there was a horse issue in the county, and, uh, I know that we have a zoning ordinance that addresses that, and, uh, and I'm sure our sheriff's department is on top of it, and, uh, so, we just look forward to doing what we can do, and if there's something that we can't do, and we need to take a look at, certainly, we'll still be willing to do that. I don't, Sheriff, you may not want to address anything with that.
Things have been addressed, three of the horses have been surrendered to the horse rescue, that three has been given further days to be pranked, and this morning at nine o'clock.
Appreciate that.
I too thank everyone for showing up this today, and just encourage everyone to participate anytime that's possible, can make time to come down here, and thank all the department heads for all the hard work they did and presenting this budget to us, and just want to remind everybody, everybody that tomorrow is the National Day of Prayer, and we'll be of service at the school, around the flagpole of the high school, around the flagpole at seven forty-five, and one here in this room at twelve noon tomorrow. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the county and participation the county had, as well as commissioners backing of our most, uh, recent wounded warriors event, that's the fourth in the county. Uh, we had large participation, uh, in three-day event, particularly with Lulu and her staff at the community center and all the other volunteers. With all the issues of departments that we hear, uh, from the citizens, and I know several of us, uh, receive phone calls often, and we cover for each other when we're available, but the commissioners do back one another, they do listen, and do have various, uh, other decisions to make, and they're not always in unison. I, this past month, I've attended many meetings, and some have been concerned with D O T projects that are going on. And as D O T said today, some of them are three-year plan, but actually, uh, one that Jack belongs to and Ford, he sent me in his place, uh, goes up to the year two thousand and twenty-one. So they are looking forward to that, and they do have monies projected for those areas in Gates County. The, uh, regional, Alamo Regional Health Services, was able to attend that this past month as well. There are substantial amounts of monies that are awarded, plus also all the, the, uh, efforts that they've made for Gates County, how they're looking at our health systems, as well as how there's going to be an increase projected for health insurance this coming year. Other than that, uh, again, uh, appreciate the service as commissioners with our fellow commissioners, and we do look at your issues and we listen to them, and, uh... and we do look at your issues, and we listen to them, and make those decisions. Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for coming. Um, at this time, we will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight, dash one, I mean, one eleven, I mean, eleven, and, um, legal economic development, real estate, and personnel issues. Do I have a motion?
Move. Second.
Motion's been made. A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll come right back. Do I hear a motion to come out of closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, I'll ask Commissioner Jordan.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to directly, uh, county tax administrator to seek guidance from, uh, from our association county commissions and the school of government, concerning guidance and further disposition of promptly discussed in closed session, as well as contact, uh, the joint landlords to discuss the cost of purchase of promptly discussed in closed session.
Okay, the motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Um, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. Second, Commissioner Owens?
Yes ma'am, Madam Chairman, I would, um, I'd make a motion that we have our attorney draft a letter regarding the matter that we discussed in closed session. In conjunction with the county manager.
Okay, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second has been duly noted. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Do I hear a motion to, uh, recess to May eighteenth, twenty fifteen? Okay, uh, we'll take one of those as a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we are recessed.